Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the City of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all of its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated and I declare the meeting open. Please accept my sincere apologies, the agendas will be arriving momentarily, they will be within your possession before the conclusion of the public participant. Councillors, are there any apologies?
Yes Chair, I move that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence for the duration of this meeting.
Second. It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, second by councillor Strunk, that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Any others? No. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,641st meeting, 40th first meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,641st meeting of council held on Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, can I please invite Mrs Manic Lowens, who will address us today, oh, you're right, thank you, on eWaste Connection. Welcome, Mrs Lowens. You have five minutes, which commences when you begin, and you can choose whether you sit or stand.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor, Councillors, thank you for the opportunity to come here and share a bit about eWaste Connection. So eWaste Connection is an electrical waste recycling centre. We're a not-for-profit social enterprise, addressing the issue of e-waste, which is the fastest growing waste stream worldwide. So, in a nutshell, what we do is accept electrical waste, our participants then process it, sort it, and then we send it on to the next stage of recycling. We also try and refurbish and rehome technology where we can. And we're very proud of our environmental contribution, but our main aim is to provide a meaningful activity for people with a disability or a disadvantage, in a place that's fun, gives a sense of belonging and purpose. So, eWaste Connection began in 2016, in answer to a personal need for my son, as he was approaching graduating from special school. So we've created a unique innovative offering that became part of the fabric of the communities where we operate. So there's a really special vibe in our workshops when they're running. Now at four years old, we're seeing growing demand for our programme. We need your support to meet this demand, particularly in the form of additional facilities. So, late last year, we were recognised with a special mention as finalists in the Lord Mayor's Business Awards in the Social Enterprise category, and we're also winners of the Waste Smart Community Award in 2020. So, we know that you think we're doing something good, and we just need your help to do much, much more. So, eWaste Solution, eWaste Connection is offering solutions to many people and families, so people experiencing loneliness, depression, isolation, lack of purpose amongst people with or without a disability. We're also providing environmental solutions, respite for families and carers, and also to volunteers who are looking to create positive outcomes. So we currently operate our workshops from a Brisbane City Council site at Kenmore Hills, which is now full, and since late last year from a second privately-held site at Yorongo. So we can only operate as we do because these sites are rent-free, and we need to secure more long-term, low-cost facilities so that we can expand and meet demand. And we hope Brisbane City Council can help us with this. We know our social impact in Brisbane is already significant. We've helped the physical and emotional wellbeing of over 250 participants so far. We've reduced landfill in Brisbane, we've processed over 100,000 kilograms of e-waste so far. So we've developed a low-cost, replicable model with a broad range of positive impacts for the community, and we achieve all of this through a mostly volunteer workforce. So we need council's support to increase our impact. eWaste Connection has proven the saying, build it and they will come, is true. So we need new sites, especially in the north of Brisbane, we know there are a lot of participants in the north waiting for us to come so that they can participate locally. So please help us build it, because we know that the participants will come. And we would point out that helping us achieve our goals will also help Brisbane City Council achieve a lot of their goals of diversity, inclusion, environmental sustainability, and creating a smart, clean, green, connected city. So we stand ready to face our challenges, and we seek your involvement to overcome them. And so the key one is the need for long-term, low-cost locations that offer security for our participants and our volunteers. We'd also like some support as far as understanding government regulations across the e-waste industry, especially relating to plastics, and we're always looking for new innovative uses for e-waste commodities. We need resources like wheelie bins to help us sort and transfer our commodities. I think we could really benefit significantly from some connections that Brisbane City Council could bring, so that we could develop some mutually beneficial working relationships with other entities. And finally, we would love to establish certainty over our tenure at Kenmore, which has been a little bit of a saga. So we're looking forward to the future, and we really hope that it involves Brisbane City Council engaging with us to bring more positive outcomes for our environment and our shared community.
Thank you. Can I call on councillor Marks to respond, please?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Mrs Lowens, for taking the time to come in and address the chamber this afternoon. My name is Kim Marks, and I'm the Chair of City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee. Relevant to the comments you've made this afternoon and the work your organisation does, part of that falls under my portfolio, which is the Waste and Resource Recovery Service, otherwise known as WARS. Look, I know that you and eWaste enjoy a fantastic working relationship with councillor Adaman and the Pullenvale Ward Office, and I know that something that councillor Adaman has spoken to me about on a number of occasions, I'm also aware just recently about your outlet at Yorongo, which is in councillor Johnson's ward, so I'm aware that she's also, as a local councillor in that area, working with you too to help you achieve what you would like to do. And it's great that the local community enjoys the work you do in providing opportunities for people with a disability to bring disused electrical products back to life. Well, I have two special schools on my own, Caribee and Sunnybank, and I know I've helped them in this space to get themselves set up for this kind of thing. And also, in doing so, you've enabled to create an important revenue stream to allow e-waste to expand, as I've said, if you've done recently by establishing new premises at Yorongo. I'm aware that there have been a few issues with your facilities in Kenmore, but I know councillor Adaman has made himself available to contact the community services team on your behalf to have necessary repair works undertaken as quickly as possible. And I know that last week councillor Adaman supported a grant from the Lord Mayor's Community Fund for e-waste to purchase a number of urgently required waste bins for storage purposes. I got that email from, via you, from you via councillor Adam and councillor Johnson. Even though council does the empty the rubbish bins, as we all know, we actually don't own them, our contractor does, but we're able to secure a very good, reduced price that councillors can purchase bins at, that they can then give on to communities such as yours, other than the quite high advertised price that the general public can buy. So that's a good bit of information for other councils if they're interested. And I know that councillor Adaman is also working with the federal government to do some, to look at the facilities that meet the needs of the local community. So look, on behalf of all the councils, I want to congratulate you and your team on at eWaste on winning the Community Award in the City Smart Waste Presentations late last year. The Lord Mayor Deputy Mayor and I remember the ceremony here in City Hall and the excitement from those in the room, particularly from the councillor who nominated you for the award, when eWaste was announced as the winner. In terms of opportunities for further partnership and a cooperation with council in the waste space, that's a conversation that I'm more than happy to continue to have with you and with councillor Adaman, in whatever way we as a council can assist you in that space. eWaste, as you've mentioned, is a big concern, and has been for some time, and that's only growing, given our kind of throwaway society. And I know when I first bought my 10-year-old laptop back in the day, it was, you know, $6,000, and you know, that was a lot of money, but now, you know, you can get them for $300, $400, so they tend to be thrown away, which is a bit of a shame. You mentioned landfill, we spend many millions of dollars digging holes in the ground to bury stuff, so the more we can keep out of those holes is definitely beneficial for all of us as ratepayers. So, look, thank you for taking this on, and I'm quite looking forward to working with you and councillor Howard in the connected community space, and what we can do to assist your endeavours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Lowens. Mr Pearce will assist you. Councillors, I'll draw to your attention the item on the agenda, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor?
Point of order, Chair.
Or Chair of any standing committee, I have a point of order to councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, that Brisbane City Council offers financial support to the not-for-profit organisation Hairdressers With Hearts as part of its domestic and family violence strategy.
Second. Thank you, I have an urgency resolution proposed by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, that has been distributed in a moment, I believe that's been distributed.
Yeah, I've emailed that.
It'll arrive in a moment. Councillor Cassidy, I'll just reset your clock there, three minutes, you'll have three minutes to urgency, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. And the reason I'm moving this urgency motion today is because in the middle of Queensland Women's Week, and yesterday being International Women's Day, a day to celebrate the achievements of all women across the world, and to continue to challenge the social constructs that cause gender inequality, one of the biggest and most pressing challenges facing women in our community, and our community more broadly, is of course the scourge of domestic violence. We see horrific physical attacks on women in the news almost every day. We know there's a huge hidden issue of coercive control in our community that's ruining and taking the lives of women. This is urgent, Chair, because we should act on this issue now. We can stand here and talk all day about it, but if we don't actually do anything, we aren't helping anyone in our community. It's urgent because council has a domestic and family violence strategy chair, a strategy that was first initiated through an urgency motion just like this by councillor Cook, but that's a strategy that is yet to be fully implemented, and this is something that can certainly help with that. A great way to get the ball rolling is for council to commit here today to supporting a great community cause, its working wonders for victims of domestic violence. Hairdressers With Heart is a not-for-profit organisation that trains hairdressers to council clients that are the victims of domestic violence, and help them get the professional support that they need. It's urgent because over the weekend, there was a launch of Hairdressers With Hearts, and each Labor councillor has donated or is in the process of doing that to that organisation, either through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund or Ward Office funds, and we would certainly, today building on that, advocate for council to do the same in the spirit of International Women's Day. It's urgent, Chair, because we have hairdressers in every single suburb of Brisbane that can lend a hand and support this amazing cause. So by council supporting this cause, we could have a real and genuine impact on the entire city at a community level.
I'll now put the resolution on the matter of urgency, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, could you please move your resolution?
Thanks, Chair. So I move that Brisbane City, that Brisbane City Council offers financial support to the not-for-profit organisation Hairdressers With Hearts as part of its domestic and family violence strategy.
Second. The motion is read, it has been proposed by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, as I say, all councillors should have received that through your email system. Councillor Cassidy, you have 10 minutes, could we please reset his clock? You have 10 minutes.
Thanks, thanks very much, Chair, and I thank administration councillors for allowing this urgency motion to go to a full debate. Hairdressers With Hearts is a great grassroots organisation that dresses DV at the, at a frontline community level. The structure of the organisation is to train hairdressers and barbers to see the signs of domestic violence in their clients and link them to professional help and services. They're obviously not training hairdressers to be professional councillors, but they're training hairdressers to see those signs and to connect those clients with professional services. So the more Brisbane hairdressers that are trained to recognise those signs of domestic and family violence, the more victims can get the help they need before it's too late. The founder, the founder of Hairdressers With Hearts has already helped more than 200 domestic violence victims herself, and so far she had been doing this on her own and has of course now established Hairdressers With Hearts and is in the process of training, training a lot more hairdressers. The training, this training and this concept has potentially already saved lives and can save thousands more. Australia has over 55,000 hairdressers and barbers, and of course is the largest council in Australia, we can be leading the charge, and I think with the support of the chamber will be supporting this cause and leading this charge out in the community. As I said earlier in the urgency motion, I understand all councils have been contacted and other, our LMP councillors may have made those contributions as well, but all of the Labor councillors have committed, committed $1,000 so far to the organisation, and that will train eight hairdressers or barbers. So each trained hairdresser or barber can help around 50 DV victims each year on average, and that's statistics out of what has already occurred through the founder of this programme's experience. So there's, if, if, if in the very, in the very least, 26 councillors contribute $1,000, 208 trained hairdressers and barbers would be around 10,000 domestic violence victims being helped each and every year. So by very small action, it could have a huge impact out in the community. The, the Brisbane City Council Domestic and Family Violence Strategy states that the only way council can have a direct role in these matters is to partner with organisations and to fund them, and this is a perfect way that we can do that. We can partner as, as a council with Hairdressers With Hearts, and we can offer funding as well, whether it's, whether it's via individual councillors' ward office budgets or Lord Mayor's Community Funds, or through the organisation itself. And so this is a, a perfect way to extend the, the strategy beyond a document and, and certainly into actions as well. So I commend the motion to the chamber and certainly hope that we'll have that support. Of course, details in terms of specific funding levels can be worked out, but I think this sends a very clear and strong message that council, council will be supporting this. Thank you.
Further speakers? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. We will be supporting this motion, and certainly, the, for what, for what we know about the work of Hairdressers With Hearts, that it is a fantastic initiative, and these are the sort of things that we do absolutely want to support as a community, as a council, as individual councillors through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, through also potential programmes in our rollout of the domestic violence strategy outcomes. There's a whole range of organisations that we're working with and want to work more with in this field, and, and this is one of those ones that we're more than happy to support. There is no way we are going to vote against providing financial support to an organisation that, that is doing some great work. Obviously, this motion is a little bit light on detail, it, it simply requests financial support. Now, there's, as I said, there's a number of ways in which that can come. So we can obviously work through the appropriate way in which that financial support can be provided, and we're certainly happy to do that. So, obviously, I want to join councillor Cassidy in commending Hairdressers With Hearts for their great work. It is, I think it's a unique perspective on getting to the bottom of some really challenging issues, and, and certainly, I know, not that I go to the hairdresser very often, but when I do, it's, it's a great opportunity to strike up a conversation that might go in directions you might not expect. And so obviously, a great avenue in which hairdressers can identify challenges with domestic violence, and then know what to do next if they hear about something with one of their clients. So it is, from what I know, something that we should support, and we're happy to support this motion.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on the urgency motion before us today. Look, I spoke to councillor Cook about this a little while ago, and I did receive the letter from the organisation asking for funding. It is a most worthy cause, it is important that we have a wide range of channels available to people who are experiencing domestic violence to get advice, outreach and be connected into appropriate services. And I would certainly support council as an organisation contributing some funding towards the initiative. However, this year the Lord Mayor cut the Lord Mayor's, what's it called now, Community Fund, thank you, from $75,000 to just $34,000, so that's more than halved that fund, which has put enormous pressure back on local councillors to fund more and more organisations with a 60% funding cut. Now, I want to make it clear, I absolutely support financial support, but I do not have funds in the Lord Mayor's Suburban, Lord Mayor's Community Fund to provide that support, and this money would need to come from the organisation. That's the message that I communicated to councillor Cook and to the organisation itself. I call on the Lord Mayor to restore the funding. Every event in our wards is back on, and there is no money to do those events, let alone the one-off programmes like this that would offer some significant, you know, educational and awareness value for people experiencing domestic violence. So, you know, the funding cuts the Lord Mayor made in the budget last year were real, they are having an impact, and they are restricting councillors from undertaking this sort of project. So I would just say that councillors and organisation needs to find some funding to do this, perhaps councillor Howard is going to stand up and speak, it's certainly been her portfolio area, or perhaps councillor Allen as the finance chair. Council just cut, you know, projects all over the city last week, very flippantly, so there's definitely money out there. The bugs tell me that Riverwalk's running, at Indrapilly's running millions of dollars under speed, so there is money available in this council budget, and I think that it is incumbent on the Lord Mayor to find, find it within the organisation first, rather than take the very small amounts that are available to ward councillors to support initiatives in their area, which he cut by more than half this year.
Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, I'll just say really quickly, I support the motion, I think it's a valuable project, and I think it's good to see the council administration recognising that and supportive of the project, but I did just want to add to the debate that if we're talking seriously about addressing and helping to prevent domestic violence, educating hairdressers about how to support survivors is a, is a good start, but it's woefully inadequate and nowhere near what this council administration could and should be doing. This is a council that has an annual budget in the range of $3 billion. You would think with, with that kind of capacity, the council might be more proactive in this space in terms of helping to set up and create domestic violence shelters, for example, and crisis accommodation. And, and delving a little bit deeper into the issue, I, I think it would be nice to see something a little bit more significant from council as part of the domestic violence strategy, and certainly I would argue that providing crisis accommodation and domestic violence shelters would be right up there as a priority. I'm aware that other councils in South East Queensland have in the past entered into agreements with non-profits and community providers to hand over land on leases, for example. I know council has a lot of land that's often used for fairly low-value uses like car parking. It would seem to me that there are sites around the city that maybe council could reallocate towards use for domestic violence shelters that can be developed and delivered as non-profit projects, that's certainly a form of development I'd be supportive of and would like to see more of. And that's really, I think, where the conversation should move to. Of course, we should be giving money to projects like this, but let's think a little bit bigger, let's actually get to some of those root issues, and we know that one of the big challenges in this space is that even when people know and recognise that they're in a violent or abusive situation, they don't have anywhere to leave to, they don't have an alternative housing option available, and as a result, they remain in very unsafe situations. And I think council could and should be playing a role in actually providing or helping to provide crisis accommodation and domestic violence shelters, rather than simply saying, oh, that's not our business, that's a state government issue. Domestic violence is an issue that all levels of government should be taking responsibility to address, and finding a little bit of funding for some shelter projects, or finding a little bit of land that can be used for crisis accommodation housing would be a far more significant and a noble step for this administration to take, considering just how much, how big our budget is and how much we spend on other areas of the council budget. I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I thank Lord Mayor and councillors Johnston and Shree for, for speaking on this motion and supporting it, picking up on some of those points, particularly that councillor Shree made, the statistics around homelessness and, and women and children particularly accessing homeless, homelessness services as a result of domestic and family violence is startling. These are old statistics, a couple of years old, but it was 72,000 women and 34,000 children in a year, just a few years ago, and, and I suspect that's under, under-reported, and those services are under-utilised, because in a lot of those circumstances, those women and children are not able to escape those, those situations in their home. And, you know, we loathe to use that word statistics, because it, I think in, in a big way it dehumanises the people that we're talking about, but when there is one in five, one in five women having been sexually assaulted and or threatened since the age of 15, and one in six women having experienced physical and or sexual violence by a cohabiting partner since the age of 15, anything we can do is important, and I do take that point, that this is a very, very small thing, but, but it is a very meaningful thing. And I absolutely agree that the strategy, the domestic and family violence strategy needs constant review and constant implementation, and this is a good example, and I appreciate the, the Lord Mayor and the administration's support in this, and, and funding for this, for this programme, but I think this should be the first step in, in finding a lot of ways in which this administration and council as a whole can support the implementation of the strategy. So I thank, I thank all councillors.
We'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we will now move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the South East Queensland Council of Mayors have been working since last year to develop a region-wide waste minimisation and recycling strategy. Can you please update the chamber on this strategy and what we can expect from it?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Atwood for the question. It's, it's been incredible, the positive things that have come out of the councils of South East Queensland working together. As we well know, the Olympic Games was an initiative of the councils of South East Queensland that has since been adopted by the federal government and eventually the state government, finally, but it started with the South East Queensland Council of Mayors. And something else that is underway now, which is very important for our region, is a region-wide waste minimisation strategy and recycling strategy. And there is a working group and some very focused work that started last year, that is now well underway and due for completion this year, to develop a region-wide strategy on how we can get waste out of landfill and to deal with gearing up our recycling network. Now, we have a very good recycling scheme in place for the yellow top bin when it comes to materials like plastic bottles, materials like cans, the cardboard and paper and the things that go into the yellow top bin, but where there is a lack of infrastructure in South East Queensland is dealing with things like FOGO, which is food and organic waste. South East Queensland is dealing with things like FOGO, which is food and organic waste. At the moment, there is only one operator in South East Queensland of any scale that can provide support to councils and it's important to remember that in South East Queensland we have five of Australia's top 10 largest councils, so the scale here is massive. There are other councils around Australia that might be dealing with FOGO that are nothing like the scale we see here in South East Queensland. And so to have a solution that works for the region is something that needs to be geared up and that is a big part of the strategy that we're looking at as a group of councils in South East Queensland. Now councillor Marks is my representative on the Waste Working Group for this strategy, but we're going to see some very exciting things come out of that. And it's something that we've been working on with the state government's support as well and in fact, state government officers have been involved in this working group and provided presentations and it'll be good to see these efforts gear up. Now, from council's point of view, we're not sitting idly waiting for the outcome of this strategy, we've been gearing up a network and a process for many years. That gearing up started with stage one, with the rollout of the green bin opportunity for our households. That was an LMP initiative and I'm pleased to say that as of today, more than 110,000 households have a green bin. Now, that's equivalent, if you take away the units, because not all units have a need for a green bin, not having that, you know, yard work that goes on into the same extent. Some do, but not all. But if you take away the units and you look at the standard household, so the standalone houses, that's equivalent to one in three households having a green bin at this point in time. So that is, that is a good uptake, particularly given that this is a user-paid system where people pay $21 a quarter to have their green waste collected on a fortnightly basis. So we're looking at opportunities to further increase the reuse of FOGO before it even goes into the green bin, for example, if that was an option. Things like composting, we're gearing up, we've supported residents composting in their homes and whether that's the provision of thousands and thousands of those kitchen caddies which are so popular, or whether it's support for composting in people's own homes with a $70 rebate that we have provided to thousands of residents as well. So getting that material or stopping it from going into the waste stream to start with is a good first step, because if you think about the way that we deal with waste, it's got to be reduce, reuse, recycle and usually in that order as well. And so we're encouraging people to reduce their food waste with the Love Food Hate Waste Programme, which has been very popular and we've been gearing up over a number of years. We're encouraging residents to reuse those scraps by composting in their very own homes and they're taking up that opportunity with vigour. And finally, we're also looking at opportunities to deal with that waste stream for people that do still have food waste that they're disposing of in the red top bin. So that three-pronged strategy, reduce, reuse, recycle is a big part of our plan and I'm looking forward to making sure that we have a region-wide strategy.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired, further questions councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee councillor Allen. It's been revealed that this LMP administration purchased the Sherwood Bus Depot recently for $133 million. The LMP purchased the same property for just $21 million in 2009, sold it to a private owner who then built the bus depot. Council then rented that depot off them for almost a decade, only to buy it back for an extra $112 million. Ratepayers also forked out over $50 million in rent over that same period. This Lord Mayor said the council could have built the bus depot itself, but that would have cost $80 million back then and other projects would have to have been sacrificed. Ironically, the decision to sell it, rent it back and buy it back has cost ratepayers almost $100 million more. This impacts, the impacts of this ignorant decision are being felt by residents right across Brisbane. Curbside collection has been cut, public transport services have been terminated, with council refusing to upgrade ferry terminals. So Chair, my question to councillor Allen is, what other projects and services will the LMP have to cut to make up for the hundreds of millions of dollars you've wasted on the Sherwood Bus Depot?
Councillor Allen.
Well, thank you mister Chair and thank you to councillor Cassidy for the question. So, you know, what other services will council have to cut? Well, I'm kind of not aware of any that are going to be cut as a direct result of the Sherwood Bus Depot transaction. You know, the, this has been in this chamber, we've had a lengthy debate about the purpose for the acquisition and why we have gone ahead with that. At the moment, we're looking at the process of that bus depot passing to our Urban Future Fund, CBIC. The asset is a strategic asset for.
No interjections please.
It's key to our bus network, so it was a very, very sensible acquisition for us to make. So I'm not sure where councillor Cassidy gets his numbers from, but, you know, I won't dispute those. I think the point, I think, I think.
Councillors, please allow.
I think the point is, his final question there is, you know, what other services is council intending to cut? Now, there's going to be nothing as a result of the acquisition of Sherwood Bus Depot, as I've indicated, that it's going to save us money in the long term and it's also going to be passed through to CBIC on commercial terms. Now, right now, we are in the process of developing and finalising what will be one of the most challenging budgets this administration's had to put together. It's too.
Councillor Johnston, please cease interjecting.
It's too early at this stage to say what that, the shape of that budget will be, but for councillor Cassidy to suggest that there is a connection between the Sherwood Bus Depot acquisition and cutting services elsewhere in council is an incorrect conclusion to draw and in terms of the shape of the budget, which we'll hand down in mid-June, he'll just have to wait for that, thank you.
Further questions councillor Davis.
Thank you Chair, my question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, this week marks National Parks Week and the Shrima Council team is committed to providing clean and green spaces for all Brisbane residents. Can you speak to some of our best parks?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you mister Chair and through you, thanks to councillor Davis for the question. Yes, it is indeed Parks Week, a week where we particularly celebrate the vital role that parks play in creating livable cities and thriving communities, as well as how spending time in our parks and open spaces positively influences our wellbeing. We have a city of parks in Brisbane and the Shrima Council is committed to making them better, whether it's local parks or our visionary transformation of Victoria Park. It's about making the most of Brisbane's beautiful climate with our spaces to connect with family and friends in the places that make our city great. Now, in the tradition of councillor McLaughlin, backed by popular demand, I thought I'd run through an A to Z of this time of parks to celebrate over 2,100 parks right across Brisbane. New parks, parks being upgraded and some of our iconic parks that we all love. So let's get into it. A is for Ascot Park with specially-designed cubby houses, fire trucks and water play. B is for Bradbury Park in Kedren, home of the Magic Forest and Brisbane's best scooter track, with an amazing adventure playground coming later this year. C is for our City Botanic Gardens, a space of quiet retreat in our CBD and home to more than 1,000 species. D is for Davies Park in West End, home to the West End markets and also due for an additional upgrade works this year. E is for Alden Hill Lookout in Windsor, where stage two upgrade works are currently underway. F is for Frew Park, formerly the Milton Tennis Centre and now home to the incredible arena playground for older children and teens. G is for Grinstead Park in Alderley, where we have recently completed a new Learn to Ride facility. H is for, surprise, surprise, Hanlon Park, where we've ripped out the concrete to create a naturalised waterway in the heart of Stone's Corner. I is for Intrapilles Witten Barracks, with military-themed playground featuring Morse code puzzles, a toy jeep and climbing walls. J is for Jamboree Ward's Rocks Riverside Park, a summer favourite for families across Brisbane. K is for Kangaroo Gully Road Park in Bell Bowery, where a fantastic new children's bicycle circuit has just been completed. L is for Lutwich, where we're delivering a brand-new local park at Chalk Street. M is for Murray Recreation Reserve, where a new playground has been delivered and there are more exciting things planned there in coming years councillor Atwood. N is for Nudgee Waterhole Reserve, where a range of upgrades are on the way to reinstate facilities and vegetation that were temporarily lost during the Gateway Upgrade North Project. O is for the award-winning Oxley Creek Transformation, which has delivered the Warral Parkland in Larripinta with work starting at Archerfield this year. P is for our iconic parklands, Roma Street and South Bank, managed and activated by the City Parklands team.
Councillors.
Q is for Queensland Ayla award-winning projects, like the Hills Avenue Boardwalk at the City Botanic Gardens. R is for Richlands, where the Castamore Way Park concert plan has been completed and work will get underway next financial year. S is for Sherwood Arboretum, Brisbane's third botanic garden, which will celebrate its 100th anniversary in 2025. T is for Thrust Street Park in Anala, where we have a new signature playground on the way. U is for our urban commons, with the latest being completed in Woolangaba at Carl Street this year, featuring specially-designed parkour equipment. V is for Victoria Park, of course, our biggest new park in 50 years and we can't wait for work to start in July. W is for Wally Tate Park in Runcorn, a massive park undergoing some significant works, including new cricket facilities. X, now this was a tough one, but X is for xylophones. I've been informed from councillor Mackay that he recently installed a xylophone in a public space in his ward and there's also one in the playground at White's Hill. Y is for the Yaronga Memorial Park Dog Off Leash area, one of many dollars receiving lighting this year. And finally, Z, Z for zebra crossings, two of which are part of the accessibility works which will be completed at the iconic New Farm Park this year. Thanks mister Chair.
Further questions councillor Shree.
Thanks Chair, my question is to councillor Cunningham. Development application information for the Kangaroo Point Active Transport Bridge suggests the project may need to remove approximately 15 mangroves in the Riparian Zone and a further 34 trees on council land, including some large and well-established specimens. The shortage of parkland in the inner city means that suitable sites for canopy offset planting have not been identified, so while council claims replacement trees will be planted, it doesn't actually know where. All up, the bridge pylons and associated structures seem likely to result in the loss of close to 800 square metres of green space, which is roughly the same size as Bunyapa Park, which is the only new park that's been created within the Gambler Ward boundaries in at least the past 10 years. So my question is, for residents who are concerned about the green space impacts of other proposed bridges, what reassurance can you offer that council will offset not only the lost canopy cover, but also the loss of actual parkland? When will new parkland be created to meet the needs of the rapidly growing population on Brisbane's inner south side?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you mister Chair and through you, thanks to councillor Shree for the question. Now, before I get into some of the detail, I have to say that this is not my project primarily, but I will have a go regarding the loss of parkland or the alleged loss of parkland. I don't accept the premise of the question that improving our public space and improving access to our parklands is in fact a loss of parkland. When will this end? If you put in a playground, is that loss of parkland for our children? If you put in a toilet block, is that, is that loss of park for our playground? Now councillor Shree, I'm happy to speak to you more specifically around the project after getting some further details, you mentioned some trees and mangroves, but I don't accept the premise of your question with regards to the lack.
Councillor Cunningham, I must insist you address your comments to me.
Sorry mister Chair, I don't accept the premise of the question, thank you.
Point of order councillor Shree.
The substance of the question was when will new parkland be delivered from the inner south and just on relevance, I think we're sort of skirting around that question.
There was quite a bit, there was, there was quite a bit to that question and I was of the view that the question was broadly about a specific project and then there were other issues that you raised as part of your question. Councillor Cunningham, have you got further comments? All right, further questions councillor Toomey.
Thank you Chair, my question is to Chair of City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, this past weekend marked Clean Up Australia Day. Can you outline council's involvement over the weekend and the importance of keeping our Brisbane clean and green?
Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you mister Chair and thank you for the question councillor Toomey and the opportunity to update the chamber on what another successful Clean Up Australia Day we've had in keeping Brisbane clean and green. As the chamber will know every year, we see hundreds of thousands of Australians volunteer to help clean up our parks, streets, beaches, bushland, waterway and conserve our beautiful environment. It was remarkable to see yet again so many Brisbane residents, schools, community groups, organisations and businesses taking part. It's hard to believe that what began as an idea by one individual in 1990 now generates so much enthusiasm and community spirit. Mister Chair, I can advise the chamber that this year in Brisbane, we had a total of 397 official sites registered. That's the highest number of registered sites since the flood recovery efforts in 2011. That's a terrific result. We additionally had more than 24,000 registered volunteers in Brisbane, participating as part of the schools, Brisbane and community cleanups and I'd like to give a special mention to our schools and business cleanups because we know, I know many residents only associate the initiative with the event held on the Sunday just gone. In fact, what we saw was a fantastic response from our business community, many still doing it tough as a result of the coronavirus pandemic by getting out and about on Tuesday, the 2nd of March. We also saw our schools organise cleanup events during school hours last Friday and there's a school in My Wood, they actually did a cleanup on their walk, two schools, so it was two in one, which is great. We've yet to see that, receive the figures on the amount of rubbish collected and of course, Brisbane's waste challenges as we know can't be solved in one day, which is why litter prevention and collection is so important to the Shrima Council in our efforts to keep Brisbane clean and green. Mister Chair, I'm sure the chamber will be aware of our 104 or more litter initiatives, which encourage residents to pick up two pieces of litter per week, every week of the year, to keep 104 pieces of litter made out of our street bushlands and waterways. And some councillors who potentially are new to the chamber might not be aware of this programme and we do have bags and they do, they are language specific as well if people are interested in that. So if you are a council ward office that would like a collection of those bags, please don't hesitate to get in touch with me and I'm happy to get some out to you, for you to get out to your residents. And helping in picking up litter combined with council's litter bins and street cleansing helps make a big difference in keeping our city litter-free. Council also has litter cleanup kits that are available to loan to schools, sporting hubs, kindergartens, businesses and even for children's parties. Not sure how that would go, but you could always give it a go. The kits include litter pickers, I call them litter picker-upperers, and lightweight handheld bins and I encourage any council who knows the group that may interest be in service to also get in contact with our friendly waste team. As a council, we have so many initiatives and programmes, I could list that work towards reducing litter in our public spaces. Mister Chair, I finish by extending my thanks, I'm sure on behalf of the entire chamber to all volunteers who got out as part of the cleanup events last week, as well as a thanks to all the residents who compliment council's efforts by doing their bit in keeping their bit of Brisbane clean and green, thank you.
Further questions councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee councillor Allen. We just heard from councillor Allen that the LMP apparently won't be cutting any other services to account for the massive waste of ratepayer funds they have spent on the Sherwood Bus Depot. Well, if no other services are being cut, then council has to get extra revenue for, from somewhere and that means a rates hike. So my question to councillor Allen is, how will you, how much will you be hiking rates by in July to make up for the hundreds of millions of dollars this LMP administration has wasted on renting and repurchasing the Sherwood Bus Depot?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you mister Chair and thank you to councillor Cassidy for the question. So it's a little bit difficult to unpick the point he's trying to make here, but I'll be brief and try and endeavour to do that. So we have certainly spent money acquiring the Sherwood Bus Depot and we're currently in negotiations with CBIC to sell that particular depot to them as a long-term asset that we will then lease from them. Now, that has no impact on, you know, the council budget, so that in itself doesn't lend, you know, any weight to a suggestion that services are going to be cut. And the notion that, you know, where, you know, what's the rate increase likely to be in the coming financial year? I've said in this chamber multiple times in recent weeks, we are right in the thick of budget development at the moment, it is an extremely difficult budget to compile in the circumstances. Councillor Cassidy will find out the shape of that budget when the Lord Mayor hands it down on Wednesday the 16th of June. down on Wednesday, the 16th of June, and until then, he'll just have to wait. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, with the development application recently lodged with council for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, can you please update the chamber on the progress of this project?
Councillor Murphy.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Owen for the question. The Shriner Council's reached an exciting new step in the Green Bridges programme with the development application for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge lodged last week. Now, this forms part of the largest investment in active transport that this city has ever seen, breathing life into our economy and expanding supplier opportunities for local industry. This will be one of our city's most used pedestrian and cycling connections. It's forecast to accommodate 5,300 walking and cycling trips per day, with that figure expected to increase to more than 6,100 trips by 2036, and that means 84,000 fewer cars on our roads. We're fast-tracking delivery of this project to support the economy and to boost employment. The Green Bridge is set to support more than 300 jobs during its construction. The development application is based on council's reference design for a single-mast cable-stayed structure that will complement the city skyline. It will be an elegant river crossing that celebrates Brisbane's identity, our subtropical environment, the River City lifestyle, offering open views to the Kangaroo Point cliffs, and of course, over to the Story Bridge, which we heard about only last week. The draft reference design has been informed by a range of technical studies and investigations, including an analysis of the bridge alignment and form options, flooding and environmental assessments, and consideration of visual and social impacts, as well as community feedback. This includes import during the design development from groups representing people with disabilities, such as Spinal Life and Guide Dogs Queensland, to ensure that the bridge is highly accessible and meets the needs of all of its users. Key features include a dedicated cycle and pedestrian path with a minimum width of 6.8 metres along the length of the bridge, a navigable clearance height of 12.7 metres per the Captain Cook Bridge with provision for a 60-metre-wide navigational channel, and a variety of places to safely pause and enjoy the expansive river and city views. As major projects such as Brisbane Metro come online, last mile travel and connecting people with public transport hubs is going to become increasingly important in our city. That's why the Shriner administration is embarking on this bold agenda of build five new green bridges for Brisbane. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will provide an accessible, user-friendly experience for residents and visitors alike. It will make it easier for those wishing to explore the CBD reach on river, over the river, on foot, by bicycle or by scooter. It will mean greater access to the city centre, the City Botanic Gardens, KU T Gardens Point, Kangaroo Point Cliffs and the city-reached waterfront. Residents will enjoy enhanced access to dining and entertainment precincts such as Riverside, the Eagle Street Pier, the Queen's Wharf redevelopment, council's award-winning Howard Smith Wharf's redevelopment, the South Bank, enabling them to spend more time enjoying Brisbane's unique lifestyle. Imagine on Sunday morning being able to stroll from the Riverside markets in the city over the Green Bridge to CT White Park, or enjoying a day at Captain Burke Park and then jumping on an e-scooter or an e-bike that are coming midway through this year for an afternoon inside the city, or even further afield over to South Bank across the Citylink cycleway. A bridge connecting Kangaroo Point and the city centre has been considered since the 1860s. Council recommended detailed planning in 2014 and in 2018 engaged consultants to undertake further technical studies on the bridge, including providing recommendations on the preferred alignment, landing and bridge options. Council's undertaken multiple rounds of consultation with residents to date, with the programme enthusiastically welcomed by the community. And in September 2019, we released the project's preliminary business case finding, which clearly demonstrated the benefits of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, and the value-for-money offering that it presents to Brisbane ratepayers. The preliminary business case identified a preferred alignment for the corner of Alice Street to Edward Street, all the way over to Scott Street at Kangaroo Point, and at that stage, key feedback included that approximately 60% of respondents indicated they would use the bridge daily or weekly, strong support for the preferred alignment from Alice Street to Scott Street with approximately 72% supporting that alignment. And in August and September 2020, council undertook further community consultation on our draft reference design. Approximately 1,800 people had their say on that design, with 71% supporting the final design and the landing points. In the chair, in the midst of economic hardship, fast-tracking the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will ensure that we get people into jobs and that we deliver critical infrastructure projects for the future of our city. As I've mentioned, the development application is based on council's reference design, with the potential for design changes to be made after awarding the contract to the successful bidder, and that includes design changes in respect of vegetation management. Two shortlisted tenders were announced in November last year-
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Thank you, Chair.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Winham Manly Cricket Club has been crying out for help from council for a decade now. Their grounds in Tingalpa flood badly and regularly. It costs the club tens of thousands of dollars every single year to repair the fields. The club's drains are constantly blocked, full of weeds and stagnant water, but they're outside the club's lease area, so they can't fix them. It's up to council to fix them and restore the drainage infrastructure, but time after time councillor Howard and the local doughboy councillor, Lisa Slippery-Atwood, failed to listen to club members and failed to act.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Marks. Please pause, councillor Cumming, councillor Marks.
That's an outrageous slur on one of our female councillors.
Councillor Cumming, would you please consider withdrawing that comment?
Oh, look, I'll withdraw, I don't want to offend you.
Thank you. Could you please also return to an earlier point in your question so that we can all hear it?
Do it just before I've got stops at it.
I've probably missed the last two sentences.
Right. It's up to council to fix them and restore the drainage infrastructure, is that what you want?
Please proceed from there.
But time after time councillor Howard and the local doughboy councillor, Lisa Atwood, failed to listen to club members and failed to act. Councillor Howard is truly aware of the problem, she has been there for herself but still has done nothing. Council did however find half a million dollars to build a fishing platform on the nearby creek. Councillor Howard, why does this LMP administration hate community cricket clubs so much, and why do you want to destroy them?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I think thank you to councillor Cummings for the question. Mr Chair, I have had the privilege of meeting on-site with Graham, the President of the Winham Manly District Cricket Club, and councillor Atwood to hear their concerns. And this is a fantastic club. They're very engaged with the local community and are always working hard to make their club and its facilities better and stronger. Sadly, the opposition have oversimplified this issue, and the benefit, and that benefits no one. The fields, like many sports fields in our city, are in low-lying areas. The facility is located within the main Bulymba Creek flood path and is therefore subject to creek, storm tide and overland flow flooding. It is also adjacent to residential properties in Tingalpa, and any work done on the fields could have an adverse impact on these residents. Council wants to help all clubs be as successful as possible, and we will continue to work with the clubs at Carmichael Park. I understand the club has developed some plans and council is reviewing these. Officers will be meeting on-site in the very near future to discuss these with councillor Atwood and the club. And can I say at this point through you, Mr Chair, what a, an amazing job councillor Atwood has been doing with this club? When I met with councillor Atwood and the club, she was totally across the issues. She had been talking to them on a regular basis, and I was absolutely impressed with her knowledge and her ability to bring the club to talk to me about the issues. And so we've continued to work with councillor Atwood and with the club over the time-
Okay, all right. Now councillors, there will be no interjections. Councillors, no. Councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence.
They're not real happy anymore.
No, no, there will be no name-calling. I asked for no interjections. I want this answer to be heard in silence, please. Please give councillor Howard due respect. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and as I said, we're hearing from the opposition oversimplifying an issue that is very complicated, and that benefits no one. What they should be doing is working with councillor Atwood and with the officers to make sure that we all work together on this very difficult site. Officers will be meeting on-site in the very near future to discuss-
Councillors, councillor Cassidy, I've asked for silence, please. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr Chair. I would like to give the answer because, as I said, the club has developed some plans and council is reviewing those plans. Officers will be meeting on-site in the very near future to discuss these with councillor Atwood and the club. I have so much respect for clubs like these, they are the result of hard work and sacrifice by volunteers, and I was pleased that the club was able to be supported. I was pleased that the club was able to be supported with the Lord Mayor's COVID-19 Direct Assistance Programme, receiving a $10,000 grant last year. I will continue to listen and do what we can to support this great club, and also once again want to acknowledge councillor Atwood, who has been such a strong advocate for them.
Councillors, before I call the next question, it appears likely that there will be a 10th question today. I will inform the room that to keep the ratios in line with what the rules require, that will go to a cross-bench councillor. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, council recently received an Arts Queensland grant to extend and enhance our outdoor gallery spaces. Can you outline what this will mean for our public art going forward?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond. I'm very excited they've got the opportunity today to tell everybody about this fantastic new programme coming to Brisbane. And it is timely for the support of the arts in Brisbane because we know just how tough this past year has been for them in the creative industry, locally, nationally and of course on a global scale as well. Theatres, galleries, art centres, concert halls, cinemas and festivals were all brought to a grinding halt this time last year, and sadly are some amongst the slowest to reopen and recover. The Shriner Council administration recognises just how essential the creative sector is, not only to our identity and reputation as a global city, but is a key pillar in our local economy. Over the past few years, BC, or before coronavirus, as I like to call it, Brisbane's creative economy and jobs in the creative sector were growing at nearly twice the national rate. We are on the cusp of the most exciting period of change, with unique opportunity to leverage this growth and strengthen our city's livability as a vibrant creative hub, putting Brisbane a cut above other global cities as a premier location for talented people to live, work, play and invest. We are a city of neighbourhoods and we're a very large city when it comes to that, but we also recognise that our city centre is our main engine room and epicentre for arts, culture and entertainment. And with an exciting and growing live local music scene, year-round festivals and world-class art galleries and museums, we are taking it a step further. How about if the entire city was an art gallery? And that is exactly what we are going to see with Brisbane's outdoor gallery in the coming months. We are uniting 11 locations across the city where you can wander Brisbane's laneways and city streets to discover new and exciting art instead of insight on gallery walls, from light boxes and banners down Fish Lane, Eagle Lane and Edison Lane, vitrines along Edward Street, Elizabeth and Queen Streets, to our newest outdoor gallery editions, art projections on the Howard Smith Wharf cliffs. You can spend an entire day exploring the city, discovering hidden treasures and best-kept secrets. Our latest exhibition, Sunnyside Up, features some of Brisbane's best up-and-coming local artists and has been brilliantly curated by Sarah Thompson and Alex Holt. The exhibition has been up since November last year and will run through to mid-April, but you're definitely not too late to catch up with those because it's just about to get a little more exciting. Council is leading the way in digital and innovative art, and for the first time ever you can experience each artwork come to life through augmented reality. So, supported by Arts Queensland's Open Air Grant, funding has been used to transform the work of the current exhibiting artist from 2D pieces into digital forms. A fantastic opportunity not only to upskill some of Brisbane's brightest emergent artists in a new and innovative field, but introduce a whole new world of art to the residents and visitors in Brisbane. Earlier this year, all 13 artists, collectors and curators participated in augmented reality workshops facilitated by one of our very own locals, Helena Papageorgio, resulting in the creation of 20 new AR works to join the Sunnyside Up exhibition. Each one is unique and one of a kind. All you need to do is scan the QR code and hover the phone over the art to see it come to life. But that's not all, as the enhanced version of the outdoor gallery will include a treasure hunt series, giving art lovers a chance to get their hands on their very own limited edition prints from Brisbane's hottest up-and-coming artists. You have to be quick, as only the first 100 participants to complete each hunt will walk away with a signed print. And there are three official hunts with 300 prints in total. But as you race through the city unlocking the AR artworks, don't forget to stop along the way, get out the wallet, buy a coffee, have a drink, browse some of our tucked-away boutiques. And don't worry, if you do miss out on one of those 100 prizes, you'll also go into the draw for a main prize, which is a $150 Museum of Brisbane gift voucher. It is gearing up to be one of the unique treasure hunts Brisbane has ever seen, attracting hundreds of visitors back into the city and encouraging Brisbaneites to explore their backyard. The first one's on the 21st of March, the second on the 26th of March, and your last chance on Saturday, the 10th of April. And with that, we wrap up another exciting outdoor gallery exhibition. Brisbane just keeps getting better.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week you dodged a question about stormwater upgrades in Yorongah, which are listed in the L-Gip. Instead, you sent your Parks Chairperson out to provide incorrect information to the council chamber last week. All of the stormwater projects listed in the L-Gip, which are publicly available on council's website, are scheduled to be delivered between 2016 and 2021. As you dodged the question last week, will you now explain why the massive amount of development in Yorongah, including major five-storey developments in multiple locations, huge amounts of infill in loaded medium-density areas, the loss of green space and open space to development, why that development isn't enough to get your promised stormwater drainage upgrades delivered as listed in the council L-Gip for Yorongah West, a community that suffers badly from localised and major flooding?
The Lord Mayor.
I'm not sure what the question was. What was the question?
The question was about the allocation of drainage funding. Councillor Johnston, could you please repeat your question?
I think, honestly-
No, no, councillor Johnston.
It was International Women's Day yesterday, and the Lord Mayor is not a stupid-
No, 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 don't do that.
The Lord Mayor is not a stupid man. He knows exactly what question I asked.
Councillor Johnston, there's no need to call people names, and, and if I recall, in your question, you had a go at a fellow lady councillor as well, so let's please, let's please keep some perspective on this. The rules allow for the question to be asked, for the, the person answering the question to ask the question to be read again, please do so.
I'll just say what a petty and juvenile response that was.
No, no, you will not call people names. You will repeat your question or the question will be passed to someone else.
I'm happy to repeat it, but let me be-
Councillor Johnston, well clearly you aren't happy to repeat it, because if you were, you would have done so already. Please repeat your question.
As the Lord Mayor didn't get it the first time, I'll say it again.
There is no need, there is no need for commentary.
Last week, you dodged-
Please read your question.
I don't read it because you told me five minutes ago that I was going to do it, that's why he just did this. What do you think, that I wrote something down in the two minutes?
I, I do expect councillors to be prepared for council. Councillor Johnston, please proceed.
You people are ridiculous.
I am not ridiculous.
You are.
And you will, I, I've, I've instructed councillors to cease name-calling. Councillor Johnston, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and according to Section 21.5 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request you cease calling people names, in particular myself, and refrain from exhibiting that conduct into the future, and I hereby request that you apologise.
For calling this whole charade that you're just doing ridiculous.
No, for calling me ridiculous for asking you to ask your question.
The situation is ridiculous.
No, it isn't. No, no, I've asked you to apologise, either you will or you won't.
No, I'm not apologising.
Councillor, you have refused to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct. I hereby warn you in accordance with Section 21.7 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, that failing to comply with the request may result in an order being issued. Could you please comply with my request?
No, I've just said I'm not, I'm not. I think this whole process that's just unfolded here is ridiculous, unnecessary, and the Lord Mayor knows exactly what I asked him about.
Councillor, as you failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with Section 21.9 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby- I hereby order you to leave and stay away from the chamber, the antechamber and the public gallery for the duration of this meeting. And if you refuse to comply with this order, your conduct will also be dealt with at the next meeting of council as inappropriate conduct in accordance with Section 21.11b of the Meetings Local Law 2001.
So, no warning, no nothing, just straight to ejection.
Point of order to you, councillor.
I move dissent in your ruling.
Dissent in my ruling?
Yes.
Seconded. Seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those who dissent in my ruling, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
There is division.
That's what happens when you ask this Lord Mayor a question. He ignores you.
Councillors, all councillors are present, all those in favour of the dissent resolution, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
The noes have it. The decision stands. Councillor Johnston, please leave the room. Councillor Sri, would you like the crossbench question?
I've got the call.
Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you might have heard my previous question to councillor Cunningham, which particularly raised concerns about the number of trees that are likely to be removed as part of the Kangaroo Point Active Transport Bridge. What I'm seeking from you is some clarity and confidence that you can offer to residents that similar projects for the West End bridges won't involve the same scale of tree clearing. So my question to you is, will the potential removal of established trees that might be necessitated as part of future footbridge projects be factored into the cost-benefit analysis of those projects?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sri for the question through you, Mr Chair. I've spoken on this matter a number of times before and I will return in a second to the comments that I have previously expressed. But I would say that as we go through this process, we will follow the appropriate process that identifies vegetation that may be impacted by a project and whether it's a bridge, whether it's any kind of other project that we do. We have established processes to identify that and we also have established processes to offset that vegetation as well. We take this very seriously and we invest a significant amount of funds each year into providing those offsets. It is in stark contrast to what we see at other levels of government. The state government projects, they exempt themselves from the requirement to provide offsets. And so, when we saw the gateway upgrade north, there were thousands of trees cleared.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Sri.
Unrelevant. It's about whether the asset value of trees for these bridge projects will be factored in the cost-benefit analysis. I'm not interested in the tree about the state government.
I believe the Lord Mayor is making a point by example and comparison.
And this relates specifically to the question asked. And my point is that we take our obligations and our policies very seriously. And so, where we provide a project, upgrade infrastructure, we actually provide offsets. So of course we take those into account when it comes to the planning of a project.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you councillor Sri.
The question is not about factoring in the cost of offset planting. The question is about factoring in the asset value of the trees that would be removed, which is a very different thing.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, please take that into consideration.
Thank you. It is fascinating that we see the biggest investment in active transport a council has ever done being undermined by a Greens Party councillor. This is exactly what's happening here.
Point of order to you councillor Sri.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Councillor Sri, misrepresentations can occur in the reports but not question time. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. As I was saying, green by name, but not by actions because here's the reality. When you build infrastructure, whether it is sustainable infrastructure or not, there are always impacts that need to be managed, impacts that need to be offset in this case, but impacts that need to be managed. We are not in a greenfield city here. So we have to work with what we've got. And yes, projects do generate some requirements that impact on vegetation. We offset those. So of course we take that into account. But let's be clear, councillor Sri...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Sri.
I'm sorry, just on relevance, I don't think the Lord Mayor is answering the question. The question is about whether the asset value of trees which would need to be removed is factored into the cost-benefit analysis.
Thank you. You've made this point of order a number of times. Lord Mayor, can you address the matter in your question? You have one minute and 45 seconds.
So, it's interesting that councillor Sri, who... as a Greens Party councillor, doesn't tend to see things in a financial way often, now wants us to treat trees as an accounting measure, wants trees to be an accounting standard on our books. Well, trees are not part of our accounts or our asset base. Now, we obviously value trees highly, but it's something that I know personally is very difficult to put a value on. How do you value an asset like a tree? And so... So, we have an asset base of, from memory, around $30 billion, which doesn't include trees and nor have we ever included trees on that asset base, but we value them highly, which is why we have a bushland acquisition programme, which is why we planted 2 million trees over a period of four years, which is why we're planting around 10,000 street trees a year. And we have ongoing programmes of planting offsets. So of course we value them, but they're not appearing in our accounts as a line on an accountant's page. And so, what we do is we make sure that when we have to impact on a particular type of vegetation, that within a reasonable period of years, that we not only have that vegetation replaced, but there's more of it. So we plant more than what we remove and that's our way of dealing with it. And that's our way of valuing it. And that's what we'll be doing for the Kangaroo Point and other green bridges.
We will now move to the reports. Councillors, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 1st of March 2021 be adopted.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. The report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 1st of March 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, the Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. We have just yesterday celebrated International Women's Day. And as we have mentioned a number of times before, I'm incredibly proud that for the first time in the city's history, we have an equal number of women and men in my administration, but also in the senior leadership team as well in the civic cabinet. This is the first time that that has ever happened in the city's history. And so, a lot can be said about support for women in business or women in leadership, but here, we are making it happen. And I'm very proud of the strong female leaders we have, whether they're councillors or whether they're civic cabinet members, we have such a fantastic team. And I think it is absolutely reprehensible, Mr Chair, that the day after International Women's Day, we have a Labour councillor here calling derogatory and demeaning names of one of our female councillors. And one of our female councillors who does a fantastic job, not rated by me, I obviously rate her, but rated by her community, who gave her an incredible double-digit swing in the recent election. And, and, the day after International Women's Day, calling names in the council chamber. These are the people who claim all the virtue when it comes to support for women, but show none of the action. None of the action. These are the people that say all the right things, but they don't actually do them. Except today, they didn't say all the right things. They were calling names of one of our female councillors. Now, the theme of International Women's Day this year was choose to challenge. And I choose to challenge councillor Cassidy, your team, and choose to challenge you to ensure that your councillors don't call our female councillors names like that, that don't demean and call them derogatory names. It is just not on. Now, you can call me whatever you want, and you do.
Lord Mayor, can I please insist you address the comments two and three, please?
Through you, Mr Chair, and I know they do, and I know they do. But, you know, practise what you preach. Practise what you preach. You want some credibility on these issues, practise what you preach. We will continue to support the fantastic female councillors that we have in this city. And we will continue to support the leadership of those fantastic female councillors in our civic cabinet. And it's not, this is not a laughing matter, councillor Griffiths. You know what? If you want to support women, give up your safe labour seat to a female candidate. That's what you can do through you, Mr Chair. Councillor Cassidy, councillor Cumming, councillor Strunk, how about making way for some fresh talent in your team? How about opening positions up that are safe labour wards for some female candidates? That would be a good way to show your active support. But what we hear is them sitting here saying all the right things, that they support women, and then attacking them and calling them names. The other thing I wanted to address is the motion that came forward as an urgency motion. Look, I raised this issue previously about urgency motions. I just really do wonder, I really do wonder...
Councillor, councillor, councillor Griffiths. Councillors Griffiths, please, no, no, do not call people gutlers, do not call people names. Councillor Griffiths, I direct you to cease calling people names. No, 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 no. One, okay. Councillor Griffiths, the point is we can debate each other, but there's no point in calling people names. Councillor Griffiths, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with Section 21.5 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request you cease calling people names and refrain from exhibiting that conduct. The Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Sri.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but I do just want to note that the mayor did invite people to call them whatever he wanted. And there's created a disjunctive expectations here where you're...
I appreciate that, I appreciate that point. But he may have invited people to call him names, but I will not tolerate people calling anyone in this place names. Please, there has been a degradation of standards. Please do not call each other names. All right, I'm going to be very clear about this. Please don't call people names. Please play the issue at hand, the Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In relation to the urgency motion, I really do wonder why Labour was so disorganised that they couldn't have put this motion on the agenda by Thursday last week. Yeah, look, obviously we're happy to support it, but it just shows a lack of preparation and that they are literally flying by the seat of their pants when it comes to how they do their job in this place. And they quite quickly resort to calling names. And while I said, Mr Chair, and thank you for clarifying, while I said that they will call me whatever they want, they also must adhere to the standards in this place that you set. And I do support that, so I do support what you said there, Mr Chair. But it really does just reflect on them. It reflects on them and the way they approach this job. And it's disappointing. We will move forward and change the rules for urgency motions to give them more time to get organised so we can actually have a good, informed and proper debate in this place. And, you know, it's been disappointing in the past to see them just try and use urgency motions as a political tool, to try and make a political point or to try and score points or try and misrepresent what happens in this chamber. And so, look, we will give them more time, acknowledging that they are a rabble who are disorganised and they can have until midday on Monday.
Point of order councillor Sri.
Well, just on double standards, you've just told councillors not to call each other names and then you've allowed them there to call the opposition councillors. I withdraw that they are a rabble, Mr Chair, that they are disorganised.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Please continue.
We will give them extra time to put in their motions, acknowledging that that way we can have a more informed debate about things with the information at hand, so that we can actually have a better democratic system here to debate these issues as they come up. And so... And so, Mr Chair, we will be going ahead with those actions to change the rules that give them more flexibility to put motions forward. And all councillors, in fact, whether it's councillor Johnston, councillor Sri, anyone else that wants to submit a notified motion. I think that's important. Obviously, we've got the city's assets lit up this week in support of International Women's Day. And that will continue throughout the week. But also on Friday, we have the city being lit up in support of Curiosity Brisbane, which is a fantastic event and festival that council supports together with the Queensland Government, which includes also the World Science Festival, which is a great boon to have here in Brisbane. And the only place in the world other than New York, isn't it? And New York's not having theirs, so it is fantastic that this is going ahead here in Brisbane. And Curiosity obviously supports Queensland's position and Brisbane's position as a leader in innovation technology and includes a range of events, music conversations, interactions and art, as well as digital installations in public spaces. At the agenda in terms of the formal items, we have the contracts and tendering report for January 2021 coming through. And once again, a number of important projects gearing up as we build a better Brisbane, whether they're park upgrades and a whole range of other improvements into the city. I would also like to mention and thank councillors for their efforts on Cleanup Australia Day on Sunday. And it's a responsibility that we all take very seriously about bringing the community together on Cleanup Australia Day. And I'm pleased to say that we had the largest number of sites registered for Cleanup Australia Day that we've had since the 2011 floods. And that is fantastic. Obviously, we expected a big year after the 2011 flood, but this year was the largest since then. So it was great, there were more than 300 sites registered across the city. And I know all councillors got actively involved in those cleanup events. Some of them discovered a few surprises and interesting finds. But it was quite interesting where I was in the morning with the family and also councillor Adam Allen up at Nudgee Beach. There was a group that had been working there, it was the Lions, wasn't it? That had been working there for many, many years. And they commented that progressively over the years, the site was getting cleaner and cleaner. Now, obviously, there are still too many people that throw rubbish out of cars and litter. But as a society, there's some positive signs where people are coming together to deal with litter. And we know the impact that it can have on our native wildlife, on our environment, and particularly on our marine wildlife as well. And so capturing that waste before it goes into creeks and waterways and rivers and the bay is critically important. And I want to thank every single councillor who was involved in Cleanup Australia Day and every single member of the public that volunteered their time to help make Brisbane a better place on the weekend. Item B on the agenda is the SCP for the Construction Restoration Maintenance and Demolition of Buildings and Associated Infrastructure. And for many of the significant infrastructure projects that we have, we need to engage these type of services. Includes things like removal of asbestos for older buildings, removal and demolition of buildings.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
An extension of time has been moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it, the Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The removal and demolition of buildings, as I was saying, this is for things, anything from major road upgrades to Brisbane Metro Project, for example, where we've acquired the depot site out at Rochedale and we've had to remove some buildings to make way for the depot to be built. And so this is about renewing the panel for the works associated with our many infrastructure projects across the city. And I think this is just basic but important work that needs to happen to facilitate the great projects like Brisbane Infrastructure, the Better Roads Initiative across the suburbs. It includes projects like the Indrapilly Roundabout Upgrade and a dozen other projects across the city. And supporting the renewal of this panel will support that work. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor... Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on both of these items. And that was a very strange performance by Lord Mayor just now and very rich, I think, coming from that side of the chamber. We just had, we just had that motion that went through with great bipartisan support. And then the Lord Mayor comes in here and tries to grandstand politically. And I think it's very rich when members of his administration catcalled Labour councillors and independent councillors on this side.
Councillor Cassidy, can I please ask you to return?
And a member of that administration called a female councillor a witch.
Can I please, can I please ask you to return to?
And the previous LMP Lord Mayor Graham Quirk and the previous.
Councillor Cassidy, I appreciate what the point you're making.
This is just ridiculous, Chair, this kind, I'm not going to accept a lecture from him on this.
Can I please ask you to return to the topic at hand?
He wants to debate this, let's debate this now. You know, this is ridiculous. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and accept a lecture from him in such political terms, Chair.
I appreciate that, but can I please ask you to return to the topic?
On item A, Chair, contracts and tendering, we have thirteen contracts totaling thirty-six million dollars. Now, twenty million dollars has been put aside for the repair and construction of concrete paths and driveways. And you would think, Chair, that the construction and repairing and building concrete footpaths should be council's bread and butter work. You would think that, and you would think that it'd be done in-house. You know, it's one of those basics, roads, rates and rubbish type things. But no, under this administration, under this Lord Mayor, this work is being contracted out once again. So there's a twenty million dollar contract that is, that work and that money is being sent off to the private sector to casualise Brisbane's workforce further, when we should be creating solid, full-time council jobs with this basic, ongoing council work. Now, we know previous, previous LMP Lord Mayors have said that where there is ongoing work that should be done by council employees, this Lord Mayor has deviated from that, so we know, you know, his true colours. He has said that it's not an ideological position, but it quite clearly is. When you had a previous LMP Lord Mayor who said if there's ongoing council work that should be done by council employees, this new LMP Lord Mayor says, no, we don't really care about that. We're more in favour of the private sector getting these contracts at bargain basement prices for them. So again, we see this movement towards a mass casualisation in our city, not just in our city council, but basic works that should be done by full-time employees. So Chair, the basic math is simple, the less secure jobs there are in Brisbane, the less money people will have to spend in our city, in our businesses and supporting our economic recovery here in Brisbane as we emerge from Covid. So the ignorance and arrogance of this LMP administration is doing harm, not just to the organisation here in council, but to Brisbane's economy as well and to the livelihoods of Brisbane workers. So we certainly won't be supporting this, that item. In contracts as well, we've got seven hundred thousand dollars being spent on park upgrades across six parks. Around four hundred thousand dollars of that money is going to Hanson, P T Y L T D. And the remaining three hundred thousand or so is going to A Space Australia, P T Y L T D. Both of these companies are not based in South East Queensland, one is in WA and the other is in Victoria. So the LMP Chair talked big about their so-called bi-local policy. But the reality is, many of these companies just have a small, a small office here in Brisbane and manufacture their equipment either interstate or overseas. And nothing is actually manufactured locally here in Brisbane or Queensland. So it's not really buying local at all. We've seen in previous contracts, the exact same scenario with companies even manufacturing their projects overseas and facing serious supply chain issues, which means delays to projects and less jobs here in Brisbane. So this anti-bi-local policy from the administration is leading to these delays in park projects quite clearly. And, you know, this administration chair is quite clearly not learning from those mistakes. We had that situation last year where park, park projects had to be delayed because there were such big holes in the bi-local policy, you could drive a Mack truck through them. And those, those playgrounds were left overseas and not being able to be imported into Australia. So the claim that they buy local is rolled out all the time, but the reality is that is very rarely actually happening. The sixth contract on the list is bridge painting for half a million dollars. So we know how much of a debacle the last bridge painting contract was, which was the Story Bridge Painting Contract. It was decided halfway through the execution of that contract that it should be brought in-house because, you know, this is basic council work, it could be done in-house and can be controlled by council. And all of those moving factors outside of council's control can be eliminated. But here we go, again, not learning from previous mistakes, we've got the LMP contracting out this basic work. So it is impossible, it is impossible for this LMP administration to change and to learn from their mistakes. They do the same things repeatedly, over and over again, expecting a different result. And Chair, I think in this case, that is the definition of stupidity. On clause B, the significant contracting plan for construction, restoration, maintenance and demolition of buildings and associated infrastructure. This is for eighty-two point five million dollars being spent on some kind of vague contracting plan. Eighty-two and a half million dollars with zero details. When I say vague, that is, I think, being pretty kind to what is before us, Chair. I, you know, you can't find details of how this eighty-two million dollars is proposed to be expended and for specifically what. I went up to level twenty-three, looked at the file, expecting there would be a lot of information there, which councillors can go. Of course, you know, for councillors to be able to access before we're making such a huge funding commitment on behalf of ratepayers. But of course, you can, you can guess, anyone have a guess what was on file? Nothing, that's right councillor Strunk, absolutely nothing was on file for this expenditure. So I don't know how we can support, I don't know how any LMP councillor can support this expenditure because they don't have any further information than us, unless they do. Unless they do, unless we are being denied information on this side of the, of the chamber chair. So we are all elected to make these decisions on behalf of, on behalf of ratepayers, but we cannot make an educated decision, particularly on such a large contract, if we don't have any facts about what this expenditure is for. It's not a small amount of money by any stretch of the imagination and ratepayers deserve to know what their hard-earned is going on. You know, perhaps when you look at, when you look at what it's for in terms of its title, it's for not just the demolition of buildings and maintenance of buildings, but also construction and things like that. So perhaps, I don't know, this is a very vague contracting plan, perhaps maybe it's so vague that they want to demolish and build things in Victoria Park, for instance. Maybe they do, maybe they do, Chair, because there's no details in here. We know, we know that the Lord Mayor has earmarked Victoria Park for commercial development. So perhaps maybe this is something they're going to do in-house in, in managers' project, get these contractors in to start building commercial buildings within Victoria Park. Maybe, maybe give them, maybe give them over to CBIC and then they can rent them out for a while and then they can sell them off. The eighty-two point five million dollars could be, could be spent entirely on demolishing and constructing buildings and commercial activities in Victoria Park for all we know, Chair, because there is absolutely nothing contained in this contract before us today to suggest otherwise. It would certainly explain why the LMP wants to keep the details of this contract so secret, Chair. I think residents in Brisbane would be outraged, Chair, to learn, to learn that this Lord Mayor is spending eighty-two and a half million dollars of their rates money without any explanation whatsoever. So we won't be supporting this item.
Further speakers, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on item A. And I'm delighted that we have a new park for Lutwich. The Chalk Street Park was identified in the Lutwich Neighbourhood Plan and it's great to see it coming alive. The houses have now gone off the site. There is some works happening to level the ground in, in the new Chalk Street Park. But the new Chalk Street Park will have a playground, of course, the centre of the playground, so centre of the park will be a place that you can kick a ball, throw a thrisbee or just exercise in general. Around the outside, there'll be a playground, a walking track, of course, picnic shelters and exercise equipment and a bike rack and pump station as well. Once, when we did the community consultation with our news branch, that we did include the fantastic news branch, I might say, who have designed this park and installing this brand-new green space into the Lutwich area. It was brought up that we needed some more car parking available at this site. So I'm delighted that council listened, our wonderful, hard-working council officers listened. And we're installing that new park, parking area into this park that's going to be, I'm sure, very, very popular into the local area. But I wonder how long it's going to be called Chalk Street Park for? Because we have contacted the Windsor Historical Society, because I've had a lot of community groups come to me or residents in the area come to me with ideas of what this park can be called. So I approached the Windsor Historical Community because what you probably don't know, Lutwich in the early days was actually a big Irish community. So there's a lot of Irish names that have come up into the, in naming of this park. But then it is also a massive, big Italian community. And there was a beautiful nona, and I won't mention her name because her name might become up and I don't want to lead anybody in a certain direction. But this one nona basically used to cook for the whole community in that Lutwich area. So I'm sure her name will be brought up. But in closing, I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor, our hard-working council officers, who don't get enough support on those on the other side of this room, but certainly on this side. We would like to thank you for all your hard work and making our green spaces even better for tomorrow than what they are today. Thank you.
Further speakers, further speakers, anyone at all? Councillor Landers.
Chair, I rise to speak on item A and the Tinchi Tambor Wetlands Reserve, walking tracks upgrade, specifically the one point five kilometre Island Circuit Track. These wetlands are an important part of Brackenridge and Deegan Wardson, form the boundary of Brisbane City Council where it meets the Hain River. It is also an important home for fauna and flora that continues to thrive and provide a large natural asset only nineteen kilometres from the Brisbane CBD. Councillor Marks might like to know that Tinchi Tambor is named after the Aboriginal words for ibis and mangroves. Having grown up on the edge of these wetlands, I am very familiar with its importance and appreciate the boardwalks and carefully planned tracks that over the years have enabled us to cross the mangroves and salt marshes and safely observe the shorebirds while ensuring the protection of this ecosystem. To look after this habitat, it is important that walkers stick to the tracks that have served us well over the years. And I welcome this upgrade that will also ensure the safety of walkers. I understand that these works are reliant on working with the tides and the logistics of getting material on location can be tricky, especially with current weather conditions. So the Island Circuit Track will be closed during these works, however, walkers can still access the one kilometre bird hive track. Although it may take some time to complete this project, it will be well worth it in the end and continue to provide more to see and do in a clean and green Brisbane.
Further speakers, councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak in support of item A. Since twenty eleven, the Shriner Council administration has delivered more than two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars in accessibility enhancements to transport services and facilities right across Brisbane. We all know that Brisbane is the most accessible city in Australia, but there is much more we can do to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even more inclusive and accessible. And item A is doing just that. The Shriner Council administration is continuing our commitment to make Brisbane even more accessible by investing more than twenty-five million dollars over this term to deliver accessibility upgrades and programs, including more than six million dollars this financial year alone. Item A includes a one point three million dollar package of works to deliver major accessibility upgrades to three community facilities in Durack, Taragindi and Bridgman Downs. Works are underway at the Durack and Nala Bowls Club with council delivering new accessible parking spaces and a taxi drop-off zone, accessible pathways between the car park building and bowling greens, upgrades to the terrace to provide step-free transitions, a new unisex people with disabilities toilet, as well as male and female ambulance toilets, modified counters and new sliding doors. Works are also underway at Wellers Hills Bowls Club, which I know are very excited about council's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment to deliver a major accessibility upgrade at this well-loved bowls club, including new accessible parking bays, upgraded upper and lower-level toilet amenities that allow for separate function spaces, accessible entrance to the bowling green, a new internal ramp to address the split levels and fully accessible principal and secondary entrances. We have also begun works at Bridgman Downs to deliver another major upgrade to the Grange Bowman, including accessible car parking and drop-off zones, upgrade access to all parts of the facility, including the archery range, multiple clubhouse entries and patio, accessible toilets with shower, ramps and upgraded stairs, upgraded multiple entries for equitable access. Mr Chair, all of these works are part of the Shriner Council administration's continued commitment to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today by making it more accessible and inclusive than any other city in Australia. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I just rise to support in particular item A here today, contract five. As councillor Howard just mentioned, the access and inclusion, access and inclusion package one, which does have Wellers Hills Bowls Club in there for an access and inclusion upgrade. This has been a fantastic program since it was introduced in twenty ten with the first nationwide access and inclusion strategy. And then the extension of this now to making sure it's not just about council buildings, it's about our council leased facilities as well. Can I say that, and I say generally the gentleman, because it's mainly gentlemen on the board with one secretary, but the, the members of the Wellers Hills Bowls Club are extremely excited about this upgrade. I'm going to mention B C again because B C or before coronavirus, Wellers Hill had about three hundred members. Last time I visited them, just before Christmas, their board was talking about eleven hundred members that they had. So it has become a much-beloved local community hub now with the, the community garden there that we launched during the middle of last year as well and the upgrades that we'll see to make the toilets and the entries so much more usable, whether you're in a wheelchair, on a walker or just pushing a pram is going to be fantastic for the community. So I thank Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and councillor Howard for the work.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair, I rise to speak on item A. And there, there are quite a number of these, the projects in this list that involve impacts to green space or upgrades to green space. And I thought this was an opportune moment to just highlight and perhaps clarify what I was saying a little bit earlier, which I think maybe the mayor and perhaps councillor Cunningham slightly misinterpreted. I'm not trying to be difficult when I say this, but I think sometimes the administration overlooks or, or underestimates the, the difficulty of finding space for, for offset planting trees that have been removed by projects such as the ones in this list. And through you, Chair, to the Lord Mayor, the, the problem often is that while council can allocate money for offset planting, finding the space to actually plant those trees in constrained areas where, where simultaneously trying to maintain open space for open, active recreation activities, while we're also trying to find space for some of the great playground projects like the ones in this list. It can be really difficult to find the space for those offset plantings when there's so little public space to go around in general. And we're definitely finding that, particularly in the city, but even in other parts of the city at the moment, where the council will allocate offset planting money and then the arborists and the parks managers have a really difficult time actually finding suitable places to plant those trees. Above and beyond that, though, what tends to happen is that a large tree will be removed and replaced with several very small saplings. And the idea being that the, the canopy, the combined canopy of those new small saplings will equal the canopy of the removed tree in three to five years' time. Now, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair, you might be able to see the problem there. If, if a tree is being removed that has a twenty square metre canopy now and is being replaced by a couple of trees that in five years' time will have a combined canopy of twenty square metres, that still represents a net loss of canopy cover. And that's what I think not captured in the discussions about these projects here. And it's not captured in council's approach to asset management, in council's approach to offsetting the remove, the removed trees that are associated with many of these projects. So I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm not trying to pick holes in the administration's approach. I'm simply pointing out that the current way of measuring these impacts on green spaces is, is underestimating the, the losses to public green space and to, to establish native trees. And that we need to have a bit of a rethink of our attitudes to asset, to offset planting in general.
Further speakers, councillor McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on items A and B. A couple of things in items A, in item A, that I wanted to. A couple of things in item A that I wanted to talk to, contract six, to respond partly to councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair. This is indeed bridge painting. One of the reasons that this has gone out to contract is that the team that we might otherwise employ from within our own resources is busy doing the story of bridge. So this is work that was necessary, works that were identified through the council's addressing the infrastructure building programme of maintaining our assets, making sure that our assets are in good functional condition. And as a consequence, work has gone out to a contractor to undertake this work. It's a standard operating procedure, Mr Chair, to put works out to contract, this is what we see week in, week out, contracts coming through the council, and this is just council getting on with doing its work of making sure that we are maintaining our assets. The other contract I wanted to speak on briefly is in relation to hangar seven, the re-sheeting of the roof at hangar seven, which is, this is contract number eight. This is money that is being deployed as a consequence of funding from the federal government through its local roads and community infrastructure grant. And hangar seven, Mr Chair, is a fantastic asset owned by council on the heritage register of Queensland, built by Sir Manuel, was then Manuel Hornibrook, later knighted for his services to engineering, one of Queensland's most famous engineers, was responsible for constructing this hangar in very short term for General Douglas MacArthur and his allied Tactical Air Intelligence Unit during the Second World War as a temporary structure, that it was built as a temporary structure using timber from old packing crates and still there some 90 years later as a testament to its good design and construction. And the money that is being provided through the federal government grants means that we can accelerate works, restoration works that were being done year by year. This means we can bring forward works and put this great asset out for the community use sooner rather than later, which is great to see. And again, thank you to the federal government for providing that funding through the local roads and community infrastructure grants programme. I just wanted to finish off briefly, Mr Chair, addressing item B. I wasn't going to speak to this, but given the comments made by councillor Cassidy and his quite interesting observation about the item before us, which I found it very hard to correlate his comments to what is actually before us, which is a standard extension of our existing corporate procurement arrangements we have for the provision of these services. It says so quite clearly what's here, and I don't know what councillor, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy couldn't find, either upstairs or just by reading the papers before us. The contract, the corporate procurement arrangements for the provision of these services have performed well to date, due to expire on the 30th of September this year, and the existing procurement arrangement, given that it's due to expire, is being extended through this item here before us. There's no great cover-up here, to your point, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cassidy's claims about what was being hidden in this particular item. It's a standard extension of an existing contract, a corporate procurement arrangement, CPA, the council has done year in, year out, and it's about time that, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy, Cassidy learnt how to read the council papers.
Further speakers? There being no further speakers, Lord Mayor. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
A division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of the resolution, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And councillors, those against, please say no and raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour, one against and four abstentions.
The ayes have it. We will now move to city planning and economic development, please. councillor Adams.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of March 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hammond, to the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 2nd of March 2021 be adopted, it's only debate. councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just my report on the business hub, it's going from strength to strength. In the last week, we've seen an increase in the business drop-ins, in particular for hot desking. So it's great to see that there are businesses that want to come back in and be in the city centre and work in our city heart, and hopefully then support our other businesses, but also taking that collaboration opportunity as well. Through the month of February, we've seen 351 attended free workshops, and yesterday, of course, they had a fantastic International Women's Day event, which 61 people attended. This week, they've got a customer service loyalty panel coming up on the 9th, being supported by Yodle, Customology and Connect Collaborative. It's about people learning how to get customer loyalty and keep their customers. On the 9th at 3:00 to 5:00, managing a happy and a safe workplace practically. Maybe, Mr Chair, you might want to see some ideas about how we can manage the workplace in happy and safe ways as well. He knows how to do it. Being provided by CCIQ for our community, for our businesses. On the 11th of 3rd at 3 o'clock, insolvency and liquidation, a good one, I imagine, in the current climate, how to handle the issues, how to proactively manage it, more likely how to prevent the situation and how to negotiate and communicate through the process, being supported by Gaidens, BDO and the Small Business Commissioner. And then finally, on the 17th of March at 9am, funding to scale, access and trade finance, being supported by ScotPAC on how to support your business. Can I also do a shout-out to our business liaison officers that I mention here frequently, who had a target to June 30 of hitting 2,400 businesses on their doorstep this year. They hit it today. 2,400 businesses have been door-knocked, and that is a fantastic outcome, learning about how we can support them in everything we do through the economic development work in council, through the business hub and through Brisbane Economic Development Agency. So well done to the team on getting out there and spreading the word on how we can support them as well. In the committee last week, we had a presentation on the Woolworths Dark Store at 11 interchange place at Rochedale. For those unsure, a dark store is a supermarket that doesn't accept walking customers, but operates a warehouse with only staff walking around, picking and packing out your order for online orders. This is the first dark store in Queensland. Excuse me, it'll be held in Rochedale, and something that is desperately needed with the online increase that we've seen over the last 12 months as well. The largest one at the moment's in Sydney, and they get out 20,000 deliveries a week. So this was actually happened through our fast track assessment for minor changes, a policy which the other side of the chamber labelled a free run for developers during the debate that we had and the budget this year. But what we are seeing now is 200 full-time jobs created during construction, which is being done by Space Frame Construction, which begins this month, $85 million worth of work into the economy, and once complete, it will cater for 400 to 500 workers on site. It is a fantastic outcome, not just for our industrial area through Rochedale, but for the whole of South East Queensland. There's also two petitions that I will leave to the chambers.
Further speakers? Anyone further speakers at all?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes.
Councillor Landers, can I just resolve this? If there are no further speakers, councillor Adams. Sorry, excuse me, I misunderstood that, I saw no further speakers. Councillor Landers, can I please have your point of order?
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
We have a resolution to break for afternoon tea, to break for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
The meeting is adjourned, councillor Strunk, so you can talk to me like a normal person if you'd like, or you can bring it back after the meeting, but wouldn't we return afterwards? Yeah, councillors, we have quorum. Are there any further, are there any speakers on the report? councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item B of the committee report, and take this opportunity to thank the committee for their decision on this petition. This development application in Wallis Street Magreca has raised significant concerns with local residents. The development clearly does not meet the intended outcomes of the city plan, and although the application has already been refused by the development assessment team, I understand the applicant has decided to appeal through the Planning and Environment Court. I will keep a close eye on the development as it proceeds through the court and support the local residents in their opposition to this development application. Thank you, I commend this report to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I just rise to speak on clause C, and ask that one be taken seri Adam for voting purposes, please.
Item C, seri Adam for voting.
Yes, so this is regarding, thanks, this is regarding the development, proposed development at 999 Stanley Street, East Brisbane, and what we have before us is a pretty significant petition from local residents opposing this development, and one that they believe will have a negative impact on their community out there, Chair. It's a development application for a 7-11 service station at East Brisbane. On the site, there is currently a cafe and nursery, a real community hub for the area. Hundreds of submissions have been made on the development application itself, primarily against the development application, and almost 400 people have signed this petition. But it's our view that the response to this petition doesn't go far enough. The community is making it clear they don't want a service station here, no amount of further consultation is going to fix or change that. They have made their views pretty clear when it comes to this application. They want to keep the character of their neighbourhood, they don't want council to go back to the drawing board, they want the drawing board thrown away, Chair. There's already five petrol stations within a stone's throw from this site, another 7-11 fuel station is not what locals...
Actually, so point of order, it's a, sorry, can I please stop you?
Yeah.
I may have a perceived conflict even just on this matter, and I will excuse myself from this discussion. councillor Toomey.
Shall I wait until the chair? Please continue, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. So there's at least five petrol stations within a stone's throw from this site, and a 7-11 fuel station is not something that the community wants or needs. What they want and need is to keep the character of their community. There's recent reports, as recent as today, in fact, Tuesday, the 9th of March, which talks about service station oversupply looming in South East Queensland as surveys replace corner stores. And what this community already has in this place is this cafe nursery, which is a community hub for this area. They have raised multiple other concerns as well, not just about the character of the community, but also with regards to flooding issues, increased traffic and noise, and taking business away from other small businesses in the local area. I'm certainly interested to hear what the local councillor, councillor Cunningham, will say in regards to this petition today on the record, because what we know, what we've just heard from councillor Huang as well, is that the LNP councillors will go out into the community and come in here and say, oh, well, it's before the courts and we don't support this application, refuse that it goes to the court, then go out to the community and say, oh, we fought it tooth and nail, only for the community to find out later that it was through a agreement behind closed doors, a consent order, that these developments then get approved. So what we want to make sure is that these LNP councillors representing these areas are on the record, and they are held to account when it comes to these developments, because this development, deputy chair, certainly doesn't meet community expectations about how their community is being developed. This administration chair rolls over time and time again when it comes to development applications, whether they are before a court or not, and then blames the Planning and Environment Court all too readily for decisions that are made, and as I said earlier, they are more often than not just consent orders that council has agreed to all of the conditions generally that a developer wants. So Chair, if it smells like a rat and walks like a rat, it usually is a rat, and if this development application smells and walks like a closed-door developer deal...
Councillor Cassidy. Deputy, hang on, deputy mayor, point of order, please.
That is definitely imputing motive on council officers and councillors in this place. I ask him to withdraw that.
Councillor Cassidy, you care, withdraw?
Sure.
Thank you.
So this development application smells and walks like a closed-door LNP developer deal, Chair, then people can only assume that it is.
Further speakers? councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. I also rise to speak on the petition regarding the petrol station development application. I must say, I'm very strongly opposed to this DA, and I was particularly surprised to see that it even got lodged in the first place. I've seen developers and companies try a lot of stuff and often get away with stuff that I don't think they should, but this particular project proposal is silly for so many reasons. It's not just about the flood invulnerabilities, it's not just about the fact that it's in quite close proximity to an environmentally sensitive and high-value ecological corridor. But also when you look at the urban form outcomes and the transport impacts, we're talking about Stanley Street East here, which is already an extremely busy road corridor, and which council has identified on its current bicycle network overlays and a really important cycling corridor as well. So presumably, and I think this will continue even as cycling overlays and active transport network plans change in future, presumably there's an intention to get bike lanes along this corridor at some point, and I'm sure she'll correct me if I've got this wrong through you, Chair, but I think councillor Cunningham, even in the lead-up to the last council election, expressed some support for bike lanes along Stanley Street. It's certainly something that a lot of council, it's certainly something that council officers are quite excited about the possibility of, and it's definitely something that a lot of cyclists have been really pushing for. Stanley Street is one of those major corridors connecting from the Norman Creek Bike Way and the Norman Creek Parkland network through to the centre of Woolangaba, and stretching bike lanes further along Stanley Street will essentially connect through to the existing Woolangaba Bike Way project and those bike lanes that start at Ipswich Road. So it seems quite logical that in the future we'll be wanting to stretch those bike lanes further along Stanley Street and reinforce the role of Stanley Street as a bicycle corridor. So a project like this unfortunately is going to directly undermine that potential, because it would introduce additional driveways and additional vehicle movements at a particular pinch point on the road corridor, where we really don't want to see more cars coming in and out of this corner site. We want to be preserving as much of that Stanley Street frontage for pedestrians and bicycles, and minimising the number of driveway accesses along the Stanley Street corridor, because every time you have another service station with dozens of cars pulling in and out, that creates a significant safety issue for cyclists and pedestrians. out, that creates a significant safety issue for cyclists and pedestrians travelling along the corridor. And it's a great frustration, I know, to the, to the transport teams when developments like this get approved without thinking ahead about the, the long-term impacts on the possibility for bike lanes and separated cycling infrastructure in particular. I also note that the, the service vehicle arrangement or the, the traffic arrangement for the big petrol tankers to come into this site requires them to turn into, I think it's called Edgar Street, it's the very small side street that certainly isn't designed to carry heavy vehicles and certainly won't be able to cater, isn't appropriate to cater to such large vehicles delivering fuel regularly to the station site. I think that's quite problematic and unfortunately that traffic impact doesn't seem to have been given enough close attention to date. Overall, I'm, I'm just really troubled that the council, not, not so much that the council administration hasn't yet rejected it, but perhaps more deeply, I'm troubled by the fact that, that the industry even sees this as an appropriate land use for this kind of site. We should, we should have been cultivating a, a landscape where petrol companies or fuel companies know that a site like this is a really stupid idea for a petrol station and they don't even waste the money on lodging a development application. I know the council can't directly control what people apply for, but the council can set some norms and standards about what's expected. And surely putting a petrol station down in a very flood-prone site next to a quiet residential side street on a major active transport corridor where increasing car movements is not desirable, surely the, the companies involved should be able to see that that's not a great idea. And if, if they can't, then I do think that reflects poorly on council that they haven't educated the industry enough about their desires and where they hope to see more of this kind of land use in the future. The cars that are likely to be used in this facility are overwhelmingly going to be driving in from further out. There are many other sites along these major road corridors that would be capable of sustaining a petrol station that's not, that aren't in the flood zone and aren't so close to an ecologically sensitive site, Creek Corridor, certainly that aren't as closely proximate to residential homes. As someone, as a councillor who already has quite a few older petrol station sites that are in really close proximity to residential homes, I can tell the chamber that they are a source of a lot of angst, the, the fumes and the smell from the petrol stations, the noise from vehicles arriving and departing at all hours of the day and night, the impacts on amenity for the local area are quite significant and residents do really struggle. And unfortunately, those older petrol stations have been there for a long time, they've effectively already been approved. But here we have a, a new application before us and I think it's important for the council to really consider holistically all those cumulative impacts on the, on the site in question. It, it really is a shame that this is a, I think it's a code assessable development application, someone will commit, correct me if I'm wrong on that, and it's a shame that residents don't have legal objection rights, but the, the impacts here are, are very, very significant. And I, I think the administration should not take them lightly and should not dismiss the very legitimate concerns of residents. There are environmental concerns, there are pedestrian safety concerns, there are amenity concerns for nearby neighbours, but overwhelmingly, I, I just don't feel that this is a high-value and efficient land use of valuable inner-city real estate. We don't need petrol stations here in this inner-city suburb. There are, there are better land uses for such valuable land and, and if petrol stations are needed to serve a broader motor encatchment, put them further along the corridor on, on areas where they're less likely to impact immediate neighbours and the local community.
Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair, I rise to speak on item C. From the outset, I'd like to place on the record my support for residents in their opposition to this application. The site in question has been a home to a beautiful nursery and very popular local cafe for many years, although it is zoned light industrial. It's important for the record that late last year, when learning of the application, I actually wrote to residents in surrounding streets in East Brisbane, alerting them to the proposal and encouraging them to lodge a submission. I also met with residents and have spoken with residents on the phone about their concerns. Issues raised with me over the application include traffic impact, decrease in available parking, contamination concerns, landscaping issues, increased noise and reduced amenity for nearby residents. As is the proper process for councillors in this place, I lodged my comments with the officers, raising these concerns and requesting their specific attention on these matters, particularly the possible environmental impacts. Additionally, I've written to the deputy mayor and I know that some of my residents have also met with her. As with all planning matters, there is a very specific process to be followed and I ask our hard-working planning officers to take into consideration the large number of submissions received on this, as well as the signatures as part of this petition. Thank you.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Thank you councillor Huang, and we were very happy to definitely refuse the Wadley Street townhouse. It was really crammed in, in where we don't expect it anymore in low-density residential either, beside the school, between the freeway, Westfield Shopping Town. But unfortunately, with the state, the Planning Act, a P and E court application has been made by the applicant and we will fight hard to make sure that we get the best outcome as always for the community. The proposed development at triple nine Stanley Street in East Brisbane, there was a petition that gained over three hundred and seventy signatures objecting to this service station and no decision has been made at this point, which is reflected in the petition. So the petition today says, we are looking at all of the aspects of this. It is not a yes or no against what the applicant, what the petitioners are asking for. It was lodged in November last year. It is code assessable, so a yes, as councillor Sri mentioned, there's no submitter appeal rights on this because it is an accepted use for this, on the zoning of this site. It has been zoned light industry since two thousand, but it has actually catered for a service station since the nineteen eighty-seven town plan, under what the zoning was called then, particular development zoning. And can I say, as a local in the area that has been in that area for all of my life on the south side, it was a petrol station in those days. It was a petrol station. And the petrol station, as everybody knows, was on every corner in Brisbane and then they disappeared for whatever reason, and now they're starting to come back. So in the meantime, it has been a lovely cottage nursery, but the people that were running the cottage nursery are retiring and the owners of the land are doing, as of their right, is to offer it as an application for a petrol station or a light industry use. The, the officers are going through this application with a fine-tooth comb. We have now issued two information letters to the applicants. As councillor Cunningham mentioned, I have met with residents in her ward office, but also at the Your City, Your Safe forum last Wednesday, and they raised several issues, some of the prime importance, the three of them. We went back to the applicants and said, let's see if we can make these changes. Currently, we're on stop the clock for the applicants, or it might have just started again, for them to try and address those issues, to try and make those changes. Because the reality is, this is a code-assessable, code-assessable DA, it is what we expect to see on light industry, but we are working very hard to make sure that we cater for, in particular, the direct neighbours, and I won't name them even though I know, I know them well, the direct neighbours, and also for the businesses next door as well, to get the best outcome for the community. So the applicant, as I said, is in the process of addressing all these concerns and the clock has been stopped for a further twenty business days, which ends on the eighth of March. So we will see where we're going as of yesterday when the applicant comes back to us. But the petition before us relays exactly that information, that we haven't made a decision, we can't say, I wrote no to it, because the Planning Act means, says we have to assess it, and that's what we're doing at this point in time.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Now put items A and B, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Now have item C, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
The ayes have it. Division, the division, division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Right, ladies and gentlemen, we're voting on clause C. All those in favour, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
Clarks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being eighteen in favour and five against.
Thank you. Could somebody please let councillor Wines know that he's free to return to the chamber? Thank you. Councillor Murphy, public and active transport, please.
Thanks very much Chair, I move that the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the second of March twenty twenty-one be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the second of March twenty twenty-one be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. Last week's committee presentation was an update on the impact of COVID-19 on public transport patronage and on the public transport network more broadly. Prior to COVID-19, demand for public transport in Brisbane was actually quite strong. It was generally increasing year on year. However, in a normal year, outside of pandemic changes in fares usually impact performance and whether we get an increase or not in our public transport patronage. I can tell you that in the year leading up to COVID-19, bus and ferry patronage was exceeding expectations of that of the previous year, and I believe was presaging a, a great improvement in numbers of people using our bus, our train, our ferry and city cat network. Unfortunately, COVID-19 has taken the wind out of the sails and I believe it's probably set us back several years in terms of where we would want to be as we go and recover. And it will take some time for the city to return to a new normal. As we now recover from the impacts of COVID-19, bus patronage has been increasing in line with normal seasonal fluctuations and continues to increase in proportion to normal patronage levels. So we are on the way back up Deputy Chair. Current transport for Brisbane patronage is now approximately seventy percent of pre-COVID-19 levels, with peak travel actually more affected than off-peak travel. Office building occupancy in the Brisbane CBD is approximately sixty percent and pedestrian activity in the Queen Street Mall is approximately eighty percent, as we've heard from other chairs, of pre-COVID-19 levels. The vaccination rollout and low or, or no locally transmitted COVID case numbers will hopefully see more people with the confidence to hop on a bus more. However, there is a high level of uncertainty as to the duration and the long-term impacts of public transport, of impacts of the pandemic on the public transport network due to firstly the number of patrons working from home. Certainly, council is no stranger to remote working. We have throughout the pandemic almost moved some sections of council to a hundred percent work-from-home arrangement. Other organisations have moved rapidly in this space and have transitioned to a structure that allows their employees to participate in the workplace remotely. They've, unfortunately for the CBD, found great economies of scale in that and have actually found either little loss of productivity or indeed an increase in productivity. And so we may find that there is a, a much longer tail to this than we expect as people do not return to the CBD or organisations choose not to come back to the CBD as a result of improved workflows. And of course, secondly, the big impact, tertiary institutions who are continuing to deliver online learning modules, which reduces the high demand students place on our public transport network. And we know that the University of Queensland was the second highest patronage generator in the network outside the CBD and as we've had less international students inside, inside Brisbane due to travel restrictions, and indeed many of those students in the opening months of the pandemic actually travelled back to their home countries, either under health advisory from the Australian government or their home government, or indeed because they could not afford to, to stay living here as a result of impacts to industries that are particularly affected by COVID-19 shutdowns, namely hospitality. Now, this is not the first time, Chair, in recent history that we've seen a virus impact public transport usage. In two thousand and three, SARS affected all of Asia and our public transport in Brisbane, although we weren't badly affected by SARS, actually declined by twenty-five to thirty-five percent. So not the first time this has happened and it did return to normal within the next six months after that. One of the key differences with COVID-19 is the recent improvement, as I've said, in technology to allow people to work from home and that's why we may see a residual, at least in the short term, shift from public transport usage to private vehicle and active transport uptake. And I think it's important to point out, the silver lining that is there as a result of reduced public transport patronage is increased usage on active transport. And I can actually report that e-scooter usage is now averaging over five thousand trips per day in Brisbane and has exceeded pre-COVID-19 levels. So people are roaring back into e-scooters. We know private e-bike sales anecdotally, Chair, are skyrocketing. So it is, it is forcing people into other modes that they may not have previously considered in order to, to conduct their commute into their place of work without other people present. Now, the presentation explored other jurisdictions and how they've grappled with COVID-19 and the impact on their public transport network. We looked at Melbourne and Perth. Now Melbourne estimates that public transport patronage will level out at eighty percent of pre-COVID levels, so similar to Brisbane. Perth's public transport patronage has actually already returned to approximately eighty percent of pre-COVID levels, no doubt in no small part to the very strong border controls that the Premier instituted in, in Western Australia. Public transport patronage modelling shows that trips are expected to grow by three and a half percent per annum until twenty forty-one and this is obviously the expectation, a conservative expectation. It's not our goal. Our goal is to have, is to have a very significant amount of people in this city, at least, at least two-thirds in my lofty expectations using public transport. Now, you know, we may not be able to achieve those in my time, but I'm certainly going to give it a good shake, Chair. I think the critical thing is we need to stabilise patronage on the network in the next few months as we roll out the vaccine, get people comfortable, particularly those high-risk elderly people, people of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander extraction who have been given health advice, who say, you know, actually don't travel on public transport. And we want to make sure that they are the ones who feel comfortable to use our network again and so that we can start to rebuild patronage back to pre-COVID levels and then take it even further with massive game-changing projects like Bridge of the Metro and Cross River Rail underway. I think it's very possible that we can do that. Now, finally, Chair, I just wanted to mention, there is one petition requesting council reinstate the city, hop a service at the Dockside ferry terminal and provide information on a terminal upgrade, as I've said to the chamber previously, regards to the ferry terminal replacement programme. Dockside was taken out of commission because the city, the kitty cats did not meet the DDA compliance with the terminal, the kitty cats are actually much higher freeboard height than the terminal itself, it would have created a safety issue with people boarding and alighting those kitty cats, so Dockside was taken out of rotation early. That said, Dockside would need, needed to have been upgraded in line with our disability discrimination act compliance deadlines by twenty twenty-two, so we have fast-tracked that, we've now issued land resumptions for Dockside and the design has very well progressed. So looking forward to getting through the Dockside upgrade in, in the next, next few months, talking to residents about what that will mean in their community with Dockside being upgraded. And of course, in the meantime, we are providing the, was Bowlden Street, it's now the main street shuttle replacement for Kangaroo Point residents. I know it's not perfect, but it is a replacement service for an unanticipated event and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillors, thank you for your patience while I was excused from the room. Out of an abundance of caution, I excuse myself before I may be conflicted on that matter. While I was away, I reviewed whether I was in fact conflicted or not, it appears that I am not, but I, along with all of you, encourage you all to bias against yourself in these matters and ensure that you do not, you do not become conflicted at any point. We always, and so can I encourage you to be diligent in that matter? Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Shree?
Sometimes I feel conflicted just being in this place, but that's another matter. Look, I'm rising to speak on the petition regarding the Dockside Ferry Terminal. And we've had several discussions in the committee about this, so I won't, I'll try not to go on for too long. But I do want to highlight again that while the shuttle service connects residents from Kangaroo Point into the CBD, it doesn't provide any of the connectivity to the other stops along the river that residents might previously have used the free city hopper in particular for, but also the paid services from Dockside. And I guess I'd note that because that service is, was a free service, council doesn't actually have any data or any strong hard data on exactly where people were getting on and off for that free city hopper service. So certainly not knocking the fact that there's a free shuttle bus. I think it's very important that that service is there as a temporary measure. And I'm glad that it's there and available to residents. But it only provides that option in and out of the city for those Kangaroo Point residents. It doesn't help them get across the river to New Farm or travel further around the peninsula down to South Bank, for example. So there has been overall a significant reduction in services for people in that precinct. And while Kangaroo Point is actually now getting to be one of the youngest suburbs in the city, it's still, that part of Dockside is still home to quite a high number of retirees and elderly people who don't have a lot of mobility. And for them, losing this service has been, it's been really hard for them. It's cut them off from some of the destinations and community groups and friends that they used to like to see. They relied on that free service in particular, or even the paid cross-river services, to be able to get to places that they were no longer able to drive to. And when council took that service away from them at very short notice, some of them have told me that they felt trapped and I think that's a shame. I know the council administration doesn't make decisions to cut ferry services lightly. And I know that at least in the case of the Dockside Terminal, there is a plan to restore the service eventually. But when the council administration talks of fast-tracking a project and then we discover that it's not going to be delivered until late 2022 at the earliest, a lot of residents are understandably quite disappointed. And I think we're going to see probably more petitions coming through this place on this issue. Had a meeting the other day with a couple of residents who definitely aren't your stereotypical Greens voters. They struck me as being fairly politically conservative in general. They're quite a bit older and very well dressed, I should say. But makes them less likely to be Greens, but no. But what struck me though was that their question to me was, councillor Shree, will you help us block the Story Bridge to protest these ferry terminal closures? Which is certainly not a question I expected from this particular couple, given how they presented. But I share that anecdote just to highlight that people really are frustrated and it's a cumulative issue here. It's not just the Dockside Terminal going down. It's not just that the Thornton Street Terminal has also been closed down. It's not just the fact that the River Walk still hasn't been delivered after years and years of being promised. It's not just the fact that traffic congestion along major arteries is getting worse and worse, which means that the bus services are becoming even less reliable. It's not just the fact that there's been a significant increase in density in the area with way more people competing for limited space in public facilities and transport corridors. It's all of those things together. And I think that's what this petition response doesn't really capture, is that residents are frustrated about losing the Dockside Ferry Terminal, but they're also frustrated with the broader trajectory of development, transport planning, et cetera, within the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. And I'm sure the administration's response, or I expect the administration's response will be along the lines of, well, we don't control public transport funding. We can't improve the bus routes without state government funding and support, et cetera, et cetera. But you know what this administration does have a lot of control over is land use zoning. And BCC recently upzoned that part of the peninsula for significantly greater density. Now, it did this knowing the impacts that would have on the transport network, knowing how that would impact people's lives and presumably knowing that the state government isn't in a hurry to kick in more money for public transport services. So if the administration says, well, we don't control public transport, it's up to the state government to put on new bus routes or to fund better ferry services. But then is still insisting on upzoning for higher density, then you're simply creating a problem that you know there's no solution to. And so I don't think it's sufficient for the council to pass the buck or to point the finger at the state government. There are some very real failures in Kangaroo Point and throughout the inner south side in terms of urban planning and transport planning that the council really needs to take some responsibility for. And the premature closure of the Dockside Ferry Terminal, I think, is one of the more obvious examples of how poor planning and poor asset management ends up resulting in a significant reduction in quality of service and quality of life for local residents. But it's by no means the only one. And I think residents are right to be frustrated. I understand and empathise with their concerns. And I'm personally very disappointed at how long it's going to take to get this terminal reconstructed and delivered. And one specific question I'd like to just clarify from councillor Murphy is that I understand that the kitty cat vessels are on a 12-month lease. Maybe I'm wrong, hopefully you'll clarify that. But I guess I would wonder that if the earliest we're looking at to get that Dockside Terminal back is late 2022, then perhaps we could get another kind of vessel for the next year or two of the contract that can use these older terminals? That seems like not an unreasonable request, considering also that the kitty cats have had some problems with engine noise and other complaints about them. So is it the case that there is only a one-year lease on these vessels? And what is the barrier for council to get some other interim vessel that can continue to dock at the current Dockside Terminal before construction starts? Noting, as I've said before, that we're also going to be losing the Mowbray Park Terminal in the near future as that gets under construction. So we've had a significant reduction in ferry services along that stretch of the river. We've had no improvements to bus services and public transport. And in fact, we've had a de facto reduction in public transport services because the administration has continued to widen roads along that eastern corridor, dragging more traffic into the peninsula and thus causing greater congestion that impedes the reliability of bus routes. At the very minimum, I think it's time to start talking quite seriously about bus lanes or transit lanes on the Story Bridge itself, but certainly on Shaftstone Avenue and Litten Road, because the issues with bus reliability are really kind of reaching crisis point. And while council doesn't control how many services are put on to these routes or the overall funding, council does have a fair level of influence over how lane space on council roads is allocated. And I think there'd be a very strong case for looking seriously at that, given how serious these concerns about public transport in the peninsula are becoming. The residents that have asked me to relay a number of alternative solutions that they've come up with where the steel hull ferry that's currently using the Belimba Hawthorn, or currently servicing the Belimba Hawthorn reach could be repurposed for the Dockside stop, et cetera. I won't go into detail about those now. I'm sure council has considered them. But it does strike me as disappointing that there is a vessel on the river that's capable of servicing the Dockside Terminal at the moment. And it is instead servicing other terminals that could be serviced by a kitty cat, as far as I understand. It's not really clear to me why one of the kitty cats wasn't used for the Belimba Hawthorn, sorry, the Belimba Tenerife connection, while the, and that steel hull ferry couldn't be repurposed to service one of the terminals in the inner city in some way, at least to provide a cross-river service. I know these issues are complex. I know it's difficult to have multiple services berthing at the same stop. But as I said, the reduction, the loss of ferry services at Dockside, plus Thornton Street, plus the imminent closure of Mowbray Terrace, plus the fact that the city planning team have dramatically increased density in this area and are cramming more and more people into an already crowded neighbourhood, all adds up to a pretty suboptimal outcome in terms of transport, forcing more people to drive and further exacerbating congestion, which again, just creates more problems. So hopefully the administration is alert to these issues and will seriously consider bringing forward a bit more funding so we can at least complete the River Walk and address some of those other connectivity concerns to offset these very serious negative impacts.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy?
Thank you very much, Chair. I often feel that debate in the chamber on the Public and Active Transport Committee is sometimes a direct conversation between councillor Shree and I, in which everybody else is a public participant. I'll just briefly address, look, some of the points that he's made. At the outset, can I just say, this administration is entirely apologetic to all the residents who have suffered from the loss of the wooden hull ferries on the network. This was not a planned event. This is something that took us by surprise as well. And I know that the ferries team in council, in Transport for Brisbane, have moved heaven and earth to restore a semblance of services for the people of Brisbane since they were taken off the water in July last year. And in November last year, to be able to restore services, to bring those kitty cats to our city, to see them as a pack of five streaming down the river, to provide those services again was a very proud moment, I'm sure, for all LNP councillors, making the best out of what was a very, very poor situation that had developed. Now, I accept what councillor Shree is saying around the 2022 timeframe for replacement of the Dockside Ferry Terminal. Now, when it comes to managing major infrastructure projects, 2022 is a fast-track in this place because we know how long it takes to get major infrastructure projects delivered. And this administration has a very strong track record of delivering major infrastructure projects. But we accept, and I accept, that the residents out there may not see the end of 2022, sorry, see the end of 2022 as a fast-track necessarily for restoration of that ferry terminal. And I'm glad, Chair, that councillor Shree is meeting with, quote-unquote, well-dressed people in his ward and taking ideas from them about, you know, they're obviously taking a little bit of a leaf out of his book, wanting to organise sit-in protests. And he's obviously taking a bit of a leaf out of their book by showing some restraint and not indulging them in that idea. I do think that is good. And I tell you what, councillor Shree, you've inspired me today that in an active bipartisanship, I will look into modifications that we may be able to make to the Dockside Ferry Terminal in order to bring that terminal back into rotation. I'm conscious that particularly when Mowbray Park comes out of operation, we will have an entire side of the Kangaroo Point Peninsula that will be without a ferry service. And that's not something that I want to see as Chair. God knows, the people of Kangaroo Point have suffered enough from the lack of services that have been since July last year since we had to take those ferries off the water. So I'm happy to investigate that, to see if it's possible. What I will say is that those modifications may be at significant cost. And we will need to look at, as you say, the cost on both of all the services that we provide. And I must again reiterate to you, as I have many times in this place, Kangaroo Point, South Brisbane, the parts of the city that you represent are some of the best served parts of the city when it comes to public transport. And there are other parts of this city, city of 1.2 million people, that have very little access to public transport that your residents have. So we will look at all those issues with a whole-of-city approach to make sure that we can deliver something that provides a good balanced outcome for your residents and for Transport for Brisbane and obviously the budget issues that councillor Allen has made us very aware of today. So thank you, Chair.
We'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of March 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Landers. The report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of March 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor McLaughlin. Are there any further speakers? Any other speakers? Councillor McLaughlin. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting, please. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of March 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Davis. The report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of March 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was an update on the Norman Creek Master Plan. This was, of course, particular interest to me as Norman Creek plays a huge role in both the geography and community of my ward. In 2010, the master plan was announced as Australia's first master plan for an entire waterway catchment. In 2011, council gathered community ideas, conducted preliminary studies, developed a vision and concept plan and began master planning. In 2012, the master plan was developed. And in 2013, council undertook further community engagement to finalise this master plan. Cooperoo Creek Park was delivered as a priority project from 2013 to 2017. From 2016 to 2018, works were delivered at Glendorman Park in Holland Park Ward. Currently, works are underway at Hanlon Park in Stones Corner. And it's a project that you really need to see to understand its scale and how transformative it will be. If any councillors would like to go on a tour, please let me know. We also had, Mr Chair, item B, which is the Quarterly Bushland Acquisition Report. In the financial year to December 2020, council secured 60 Clump Road up at Mount Gravat. This 1.2 hectare property supports remnant vegetation and forms part of an important ecological corridor connecting habitat near Tuie Forest. The acquisition of the property will also consolidate council-owned bushland at Mount Gravat Park. Council has been progressing negotiations to acquire numerous other priority properties across the city. Other than the acquisition of land through the programme, council also expended some funds in the financial year to date on cleaning up recently acquired properties. This includes demolishing houses and removing rubbish from acquired properties so they can be restored and established as public conservation reserves. Mr Chair, it was Lord Mayor Sally Ann Atkinson who started Brisbane's Bushland Acquisition Programme in 1990. And it was this administration which reached an accelerated target of 750 hectares of bushland purchased and protected in just four years, from 2016 to 2020. Since 1990, council has bought over 4,270 hectares into public ownership and protection, including Brisbane's most significant koala habitat areas and large sections of natural areas such as Mount Cootha Forest. Mr Chair, we also had a park naming and three petitions. And I'm sure there'll be plenty of comments in the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Miss Chair. And I'm delighted to be able to speak to this report as well. First off, I'd like to speak to the Bushland Preservation Report. And we always get the gloss from the LNP in relation to their performance in relation to bushland preservation. Unfortunately, it's a sad story and it is not the case. The gloss hides a lot of, unfortunately, muck in relation to what is going on with the Bushland Preservation levy and funding. Disappointingly, we spent less than 18% of money collected in the last year on bushland, on the purchase of bushland. That is, when you talk to residents, when you let them know how little of their bushland preservation money is actually being used by this council to purchase bushland, they get a shock. They are dismayed. And I know time and again, residents, and when I speak to habitat groups, talk about the poor performance of this administration in purchasing bushland and in actually looking after our environment. And certainly, one of the things we've called on or asked for or expect the administration to do is to actually come up with a strategy for the environment. Come up with a strategy, an environmental strategy for the city. And as yet, the LNP have done nothing. Of course, they don't want to do anything because if you had an environment strategy that actually said where the land was that we actually wanted to preserve, you would suddenly remove a whole lot of hocus pocus about how land and funding is happening in relation to bushland. It's an uncomfortable fact that it would actually make bushland purchasing by this council transparent to the residents of Brisbane. So we believe there should be an environmental strategy for the city, that this should inform our bike strategy. It should also inform our purchase of bushland strategy. Now, in relation to this report, disappointingly, we collected, or we collected $16 million for a bushland purchase. And yet, we only spent three on actually purchasing or acquiring properties, which meant a whole lot of money that was previously used and contained in our core budget is now being taken out of this fund. And it means that what we're doing is missing out on purchasing really important bushland for the city. And that brings me to the next point, which is in relation to the petition, the two petitions in the report today. So... in the report today, so item D and E. And, Mr Chair, I would request that they're taken, serial item for voting.
D and E together.
Yeah, D and E together for voting.
Yeah.
And, no, sorry, okay, you got that. Yeah, requesting council acquire land at Beckett Road, Bridgeman Downs, for the purpose of a wildlife corridor across Beckett Road. And of course, that land has been very contentious, tamed to significant amounts of flora and fauna, to a healthy koala population. And unfortunately, despite three urgency motions, despite numerous calls for this administration to use some of the bushland funds that we have here to purchase this property, well, these properties are threatened by development, this council and this LMP administration has outright refused to do anything. Outright refused to do anything. Even, oh, well, that's right. What did they do? I'll take that interjection. What did they do at Carrara Street at Mount Cravat? Land that was cleared, that had no koalas on it, that had no flora and fauna on it? It was actually purchased back. We spent a huge amount of our acquisition money buying that land back, and then now we're rehabilitating it. And yet here, we have a significant amount of land, a significant corridor, and this land here, we won't buy back. You've really got to wonder about the logic of what this administration, what this council stands for. And what we would say is if we had, if this council actually had a strategy for what are the significant areas of the city that we should be trying to preserve and keep for generations into the future, then we could check it off against this strategy. Rather than have these decisions hang out there, hang out there and nothing happens. So we won't be, and we can't be, supporting what this administration is doing in terms of the environment, and particularly in terms of these petitions. Residents out there should be really feeling let down by the way they've been treated in relation to this land and by the way they've been treated by this administration. And I can tell you strongly that habitat groups, wildlife groups across Brisbane are watching eagerly for this bikeway strategy in our forests to see how this administration responds to that. Thank you, Ms Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Chair. I rise in support of the park naming submission for the park known as Manly Road Park at 880 Manly Road, Wakely, to be named Bill McFarlane Park. This is the Wakely Sports Park, which was in Doeboy Ward prior to the last election, but now faithfully falls within Chandler Ward. I'm very pleased that this park naming submission has made it here, and I'd like to record my thanks to the staff at Asset Services East and News, as well as councillor Cunningham's office, who helped progress this very important proposal, and I'll tell you why it's so important at the end. Bill McFarlane, or Mr Mack as he was affectionately known by, has very strong ties to the eastern suburbs of Brisbane through his service to women's sport, Meals on Wheels, and the Winham Manly community. It's actually very fitting that we are naming a park after this man who did so much for women's sport just the day after International Women's Day. Bill's legacy began when he played an important role in the development of McFarlane Field at 388 Wandle Road in Manly West, where he mowed the fields' grass to perfection every week on his old Ferguson tractor. Fields were later utilised by the Winham Manly Marching Girls Association and the Winham Manly Women's Basketball Association for more than 20 years. Bill is the past president of the now-defunct Women and Districts Marching Girls Association, and he and his late wife Olive were actively involved in the association for 30 years. Eventually, during the 1990s, the fields at Wandle Road were ceased to be used by the Marching Girls Association after the group was wound up in 2007, 2007, marching girls no longer being flavour at the time. Bill then generously gifted the association's site at 388 Wandle Road to the Winham and Manly Districts Meals on Wheels Association for a new facility to be developed. Meals on Wheels is a charity organisation that helps people stay living in their home and connect with their communities by providing meals, a safety and wellbeing check, and social cohesiveness to their clients. And Winham and Manly Districts certainly service a large and growing base. Unfortunately, due to a lack of funds, Meals on Wheels was forced to reluctantly sell the parcel of land to Bunnings. But with the land sold, the charity service now had the funds to construct a kitchen, but no land to build it on. In 2014, they petitioned myself to construct the site at 880 Manly Road, which is actually the preferred site for a new sports facility. And it was a long journey, a very long journey, to take Winham and Manly Districts Meals on Wheels money, partner it with a sports organisation. We're very glad and pleased that we found Netball Queensland to partner with, to then develop that facility. And on the 25th of July last year, I had the honour of officially opening the $7.2 million Wakely Districts Sports Park with a new commercial kitchen for Meals on Wheels, with Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner, councillor Lisa Atwood was there, and as well as the CEO of Netball Queensland, Catherine Clark. And it was a great day because Winham and Manly Districts Meals on Wheels had fought for that day since the 90s. They successfully moved into their new building in May last year and have been continuing their essential work of providing food services to the local community ever since. I launched a petition in July last year to rename the new sports park to Bill McFarlane Park, and on its closing, it received 217 signatures from locals who agreed that this man's legacy is one that is still having an impact on people today, and it deserves to be remembered and honoured by people in this place and the community more broadly. Without the generosity of Bill McFarlane in gifting that initial piece of land to Winham Districts Meals on Wheels and his push for transfer and development of the site, this important community facility, this important community and sports facility would never have been made possible, and it's only fitting that council name the new park in his honour. I'd also like to take this time to thank Bill's family, especially his granddaughter Nellie Hilda, for meeting with me, leading the petition to have this great man recognised for his work in the community. And I said I would tell you why this is so important at the start. When we set out to get this facility constructed, Bill McFarlane was 88, and I believe he's now 96. So very important that we got this park name, because Bill has been waiting a long time to see it happen, and I'm sure he will be very pleased to know that this council will have supported the submission, and I hope all councillors do so.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I also rise in support of item C, as Bill is one of my constituents. The land, as councillor Murphy said, is occupied by the new Meals on Wheels kitchen, which appears to be going well every month when I go down there. And the Netball courts have been leased to Queensland Netball, and they're getting greater use of those courts as well. Bill's, and as councillor Murphy said, Bill's involvement was he was president of the Winham Manly Marching Girls Association, and he actually told me, he and a few of the other gentlemen involved with the organisation, they actually put up their own money to buy some of the land which the Marching Girls and the Women's Basketball Association occupied. And it was when those groups folded that they were looking for a worthy non-for-profit group to support, and Bill, as a strong supporter of Meals on Wheels, gave a substantial amount of land to Meals on Wheels, and as councillor Murphy said, Meals on Wheels sold that land, and then they had plenty of money to put towards this new project, and it's turned out really well. Bill lives in Manly West, he's one of nature's gentlemen. He is, I think, I've got him as 95, so anyway, he's 95 years young, and he's fit as a proverbial fiddle and as sharp as a proverbial tack. He had a successful career in business and was a great community supporter as well. And one of my lasting memories of Bill is he's a great contributor of raffle prizes. They used to run a big raffle at the Meals on Wheels Volunteers Christmas Party, and it was a free raffle, and Bill would provide about 75% of the 100 or so prizes for, I said, "Bill, where did you get all those prizes from?" He said, "I go to a few of the other clubs and win some of their raffles too, and then I bring them down here for Meals on Wheels to sell off." And all the people who work on Meals on Wheels really enjoyed that and really enjoyed winning, the chance of winning some of the prizes that Bill had provided. So congratulations to Bill for being honoured with a park named after him, especially such a prominent park with so many great facilities, and he's a worthy recipient, and we strongly support this item.
Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak with excitement on item B of the committee report on the bushland preservation levy report for the period ended December 2020. Mr Chair, I would like to congratulate the Srinarayana Council administration on securing 60 Clump Road at up at Mount Cravat. As councillor Cunningham stated, this is a 1.2 hectare property, supports remnant vegetation and forms an important ecological corridor connecting Mount Cravat Conservation Reserve and Rowley Chapman Reserve, where there are constant koala sightings. Mr Chair, acquiring this part of land will consolidate council on bushland at Mount Cravat Park and lay a good foundation for the future wildlife corridor that is also being supported by the federal government, and that is something local habitat groups are extremely grateful. I happened to run into Mr Michael Fox from Habitat Brisbane at Mount Cravat Lookout last week, and I'm sure he'll be so excited to tell you how excited he is about the progress of the Srinarayana Council administration has made in preserving our environment and wildlife. So I cheerfully commend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks, Chair. I'm very surprised, and perhaps she will shortly, to see that councillor Davis hasn't spoke on these petitions, clause D and E, which I'll speak on very briefly and in support of what councillor Griffiths has just said. These are very important petitions that have come to council, calling on council to purchase this land. I understand the members of councillor Davis's community are watching right now as we speak, and will be disappointed, online, I believe, councillor Cumming, not up there, will be disappointed to see that she's not contributing. She may, she may, she may get up after this and contribute to that debate. But picking up on the point that councillor Griffiths made, that the use of the bushland acquisition levy and fund, yeah, that's exactly right, councillor Strung. I think the better term is the misuse of the bushland acquisition fund we now see in council under the LMP administration. And it's all about priorities, and there's very little logic, as councillor Griffiths said, to how this money is being used. This is a prime piece of land in the Mountains to Mangroves corridor that, if it is developed, and what we know is that this is before the Planning and Environment Court, and it's at the stage now, we understand where council is negotiating with the developer, and what we know, time and time again, when council and this administration, and this LMP administration...
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Adams.
It's not here we go, it's impugning motive. This is in P and E Court.
I didn't say anything yet.
Well, if it is in P and E Court, so the first thing I'll say is, is always, please stick to the topic at hand, please don't impugn motive, but if it is in the P and E Court, please be considerate, please give consideration to any sub judiciary matters as well that may arise from this.
Yes.
And so, just, again, for your own good, really, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. All I mentioned was the word P and E Court, and the administration is very defensive, very defensive about that. What we know from history and their actions in many of these cases, and this is directly relating to this chair, because this development is before the P and E Court, what we know from plenty of other deals that this administration has done with developers behind closed doors results in...
I mean, we had a discussion about this last week. The implication is not appropriate, and the, as you well know, and as we've discussed many times in this place, there are orders that are given to this council. So can we please just reflect, have the comments reflect that? Councillor Cassidy.
And what we see is that council, on many, many occasions, agrees with a developer to an outcome, and that's just the fact. They're the facts of these cases, and that's what's currently happening at the moment. So locals, local residents are worried that they're going to lose what is part of Brisbane's ecological heritage. This will be a missing link in the Mountains to Mangroves corridor if this gets developed, and people are genuinely worried about that. And this is something this administration should be taking very seriously. We've got the chair getting up and saying they're very proud of their bushland acquisition programme, but we find out that only 18% of the funding has been allocated to actually spent preserving pieces of bushland that are under threat, and this is one that is under serious threat. And if there is any outcome that results in a development on this site, whether it is a scaled-back service station or a scaled-back townhouse development, that will see the destruction of this entire Mountains to Mangrove corridor, which stretches from the hills beyond Brisbane up around your neck of the woods, Chair and Deputy Chair, all the way out to the Ramsar-listed Morton Bay. So this is of the most importance that this land is preserved, and when locals petition, their local councillor and this administration to actually use the bushland acquisition levy for what it was designed, to protect some of the most significant land in this city, and they are refusing, and they see, they see what happens over there at Narin and Carrara Street, where that fund is politicised, and land that is not of high ecological value is purchased, when land like this on Beckett Road is not purchased, not protected, they know that those decisions are politically made.
Point of order, councillor Hammond.
Will the councillor take a question?
Councillor Cassidy, will you take a question?
No, Chair.
He's declined. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
So when residents see those decisions being made, they know that they're made politically. They know that a political decision is made by this administration where to purchase this land. That is clearly not made using science, that is not made on ecological values, because what we have is a well-established koala population, as councillor Griffiths has said. There's a whole lot of other animals and birds and insects that live on this site and rely on this site to survive, and if this administration doesn't purchase this, we know what will happen. This site will be developed, and that Mountains to Mangrove corridor that successive administrations, LMP administrations in the past, and Labor administrations have protected, and this is where it comes to an end. Councillor Davis, and councillor Adams, and councillor Cunningham, and this Lord Mayor, this is where that corridor comes to an end, if this administration doesn't protect this land.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair, and I rise to speak to items D and E regarding petitions asking that council acquire properties on Beckett Road in Bridgeman Downs through the bushland acquisition programme. Two of the petitions are in respect of 415 and 427 Beckett Road and are subject of the Planning and Environment Court appeal, and the third petition sought to add adjacent properties and some on the opposite side of Beckett Road. And there is particular local interest in 415 and 427 Beckett Road and the nature of the development that is proposed on them. The current DA seeks to establish on the core properties a childcare centre, a service station, a food and drink outlet, and multiple dwellings. This is a development which is at odds with the wishes of the local residents for the character of their suburbs, and I strongly agree with them. And I provided that feedback both to the planning officers and to the deputy mayor. In fact, I letterboxed around 250 homes in the vicinity of the two blocks, alerting residents to the development application and providing them with submission details. As councillors would be aware, council refused the application. However, the developer is appealing council's rejection of their application, and currently council is vigorously defending its decision in the Planning and Environment Court in line with court directions. It is disappointing that despite the two blocks containing vegetation considered state significant, the state Labor government chose not to protect the site through the powers available to the planning minister, which would have ensured, would have ensured the development would not go ahead. Bridgeman Downs is one of a few remaining suburbs on Brisbane's north side where expansion of the urban footprint into formal rural residential areas is slated for development under the state Labor government's South East Queensland plan. It's why council has been working with the local community on the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan to help guide future development in the suburb, with the aim that the neighbourhood plan meets community expectation of a relaxed suburb combining city convenience with bushland beauty. The strategy for the neighbourhood plan has identified areas of environmental significance, and I have every confidence that as part of the draft plan, we will see added protections for our waterways and vegetation that the community so value. Mr Chair, I'd like to address the convicted, confected outrage by the leader of the opposition, not only today but in previous meetings. As councillors may be aware, one of the petitions was jointly sponsored by the leader of the opposition and the state member for ASPLY. I would note, Mr Chair, that the only time that the leader of the opposition and the state member for ASPLY had the remotest bit of interest in Bridgeman Downs was during the last year's state election. the last year's state election, where the subject properties fell within the tightly contested seat boundary. It is a bit rich...
Councillors, councillors please, alright, councillors, councillor Davis, councillors, please allow councillor Davis to be heard in silence, councillor Davis.
Thank you Mr Chair, it is a bit rich for the member for Aspli to petition council to buy these blocks of land when three kilometres down the road in Castle Dine, the local residents have a very special name for the member for Aspli, Bulldozer Bart, and the reason for it, Mr Chair, not my words, residents' words, not my words...
Is there a point of order, excuse me, did you call a point of order councillor Sri? Could you please state your point of order?
Just disorderly conduct in the chamber, it's obvious that different councillors are goading one another and it's starting to get out of hand.
I have asked them to be quiet, I'll do so again.
And noting that when one speaks and says something provocative, that provokes others to further responses, and perhaps...
Alright, okay. No, 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 there will be no debate about this, councillor Sri, your major point of order, please, please be seated, I'll make a decision. I've asked for the councillor to be heard in silence, I'll do so again, please councillor Davis, please, councillors, allow her the ability to have her speech provided in silence, councillor Davis.
And Mr Chair, why do they name the member for Aspli in those terms? It's because he's a bit gung ho about redeveloping existing sporting fields to medium-density housing and cutting down a healthy number of trees in the process. As I mentioned earlier, the fact is that last year, had the member for Aspli truly cared about the blocks of land on Beckett Road, he would have arranged for the planning minister to call in the development at no cost to the rate payer. But councillor Cassidy and the member for Aspli weren't actually interested in preserving the bushland on those sites, they were only interested in petty politicking during the state election. The state government claimed that the bushland was not significant enough to call it in, and the state member did nothing about it, except to try and shift the blame to council. Mr Chair, that's nothing but pathetic. I know that there is very strong community desire to preserve the vegetation on the two blocks, and I'm in furious agreement with them. As outlined in the petition response, we will continue to advocate for the community through the court's appeal process and through the development of the neighbourhood plan. Mr Chair, the opposition councillors know full well that we cannot speculate on the outcome of the matter before the courts, but I can assure local residents that council will continue to oppose this development with the ultimate aim of protecting the land at no cost to rate payers.
Right, further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks Mr Chair. Well, look, we've had a predictable, but no less disappointing response from councillors opposite on this debate on bushland acquisition and on the petition. It is this side of the chamber that has the runs on the board when it comes to taking real action to protect bushland, and those councillors on the opposite side of the chamber hate it, they absolutely hate it, Mr Chair. It's been quite incredible seeing the opposition's campaign on Beckett Road, given they spent so much energy previously campaigning on bushland purchases in LNP wards. Who can forget that Labour comrades spent many months on the ground in the deputy mayor's ward campaigning for a purchase there, before they decided they were against it? We have clear corporate rules, we are rightly transparent and accountable to this chamber, and I am very proud of the work done by this administration to protect and enhance our bushland in Brisbane. When it comes to Beckett Road, Mr Chair, the application is before the Planning and Environment Court. Council refused the DA on this site, and we have been consistent in saying that we do not support the destruction of koala habitat in this matter, and that is our clear position. As opposition councillors are well aware, there are a number of ways that bushland can be saved. We have a proud record of making sure that critical bushland in private ownership is protected through the use of legislative requirements, and we use our mapping to make sure as much privately owned bushland as possible can be protected. That's why council officers refuse the application in the first place, because we don't support the development on the site in a way that is proposed. We do support the protection of this bushland, and I believe that council officers made the right decision. If the opposition were truly so concerned about this site, then instead of playing politics as they are here today, they should have picked up the phone to their colleagues down the road and asked for them to call in the application. They had that power, Mr Chair, and they squibbed it. We know that the state government can and does use their call-in ploughers when they want to, we saw it with West Village, but they refused to act on Beckett Road. So forgive me if I don't buy the crocodile tears from those opposite, the Labour government could have called in the development and they did nothing. Now, when it comes to bushland preservation levy, council's approach to conserving and restoring our habitat is more than just searching on realestate.com.au. 100% of the bushland levy goes towards bushland preservation and restoration. The levy funds invasive species management, it supports wipeout weeds, which I'm often hearing from those opposite, saying we should expand.
Councillors, please, councillors, there's been quite a bit of interjecting, could I just ask you to be silent for the balance of councillor Cunningham's presentation?
The levy supports our Oxley Creek transformation, it supports the Community Conservation Partnerships Programme, including Habitat Brisbane. So, Mr Chair, through you, which Habitat Brisbane groups does the opposition want to shut down? Or perhaps the opposition want to tell pensioners that they can no longer get a remission on the bushland preservation levy? In summary, council has numerous biodiversity policy experts advising on how best to manage our bushland, and this administration will listen, always listen to the experts and the science behind their decisions.
On items A, B and F, excuse me, A, B, C and F, all those in favour of A, B, C and F, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. On items D and E, items D and E, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths, please ring the bells. On items D and E, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. Thank you, and those against, please say no and raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. We will now proceed to the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee, please. Councillor Marks.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be adopted, is there any debate, councillor Marks?
Thank you Mr Chair, last week we had a committee presentation on the domestic animal population survey, no petitions, and I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Marks, I will now put the resolution to the chamber, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of March be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landis, the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be adopted, is there any debate, councillor Howard?
Thank you Mr Chair, we had a very informative committee presentation on the flora and fauna management in council cemeteries, and that was presented to us by Leanne McNeil, who is the cemetery and crematoria manager, and it was Leanne's last presentation, as she is sadly leaving Brisbane City Council, and just to, I'd just like to place on record...
Councillors, please allow speaker to be heard in silence. Councillor Howard.
Thank you Mr Chair, I would like to place on record our appreciation to Leanne, she joined council in 2010 and has been in the cemeteries and crematoria area since 2015. Leanne has achieved a great deal in her time there and is renowned for her advocacy, promotion and championing of council cemetery network and ensuring best practice behaviours occur. Leanne became a subject matter expert in a field she didn't have any previous experience, and as she continued to expand and share this knowledge, she was recognised as a leader in this arena. She was often invited to speak at industry and leadership forums, and she has been a long-serving board member of the peak body Australian Cemeteries and Crematoria Association. She has developed and fostered great people through the leadership of her team, and it is, as you would be aware, Mr Chair, you know, a very sad occasion in most cases for people needing to use the services of our cemeteries and crematoria, and also a very important work that they do in supporting the families of the bereaved. So I really want to pay tribute to Leanne for her amazing work and the work that her team does. The presentation was so well received, we had so many questions, it was really something very special. Leanne is leaving council to continue her work in the cemetery industry at a national level. We wish her well, knowing her experience will benefit not just Brisbane residents, but many other cemetery and crematoria providers across Australia, as they support people through a real time of need. So, Mr Chair, on that note, we also had two petitions, which I will leave for debate to the chamber.
Further speakers?
Yes.
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair, Mr Chair, in relation to item B, I ask that it be dealt with surreal item for voting purposes.
Item B will be dealt with surreal item for voting.
And just speaking in relation to item B, it's a petition containing 59 signatures, it's part of an area leased to Brisbane City Soccer Club, and it includes an area between Mark Street and the Bollards surrounding the soccer fields. It seems to be an error to me, the fact that an area leased to sports club should, would be a road including a field, and I believe the road and the curvin' channel should remain with council, and council needs to amend the lease and clarify the situation. Also, instead of relying upon legal technicalities, there's a need for this job to be done, council needs to adopt the Nike approach and just do it. It's ridiculous to expect a club to be responsible for repairs to a road surface as part of a council leased area, and I feel this is just another example of this administration treating local sporting clubs with contempt, so I oppose the response to the petition.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Thank you Mr Chair, Mr Chair, I would just place on record that, of course, the response was that Mark Street will be listed for consideration in council's Future Capital Works Programme, and commend all to the chamber.
On items A and C, all those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. And on item B, all those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Strunk and councillor Cunningham, please ring the bells. Councillors, on item B, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and four against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please. Councillor Allen.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 2nd of March 2021 be adopted, is there any debate, councillor Allen?
Thank you Mr Chair, in last meeting, in last committee meeting, we had a presentation on how we manage master data, and last week's committee presentation was specifically around data quality management and how council manages master data in critical council business systems. The presentation included describing what master data is and why it is important, explaining how council manages master data, providing an overview of vendor master data, rate payer master data, and other customer master data. High-quality data supports good decision-making and the delivery of council's goals. Council uses its information assets to deliver business advantage for the rate payers of the city. Master data is important, as it is the core set of data that describes entities with which council conducts business. The types of master data include employee and staff data, organisational structure data, vendor data, and rate payer data. It is fundamental that council appropriately manages master data so that it is accurate and is available in real time. In addition to the presentation, we had a regular report, a financial report on receivables, rates, payables, provisions and malls for the period ended December 2020. Now, importantly, this report contains a lot of detailed information around council receivables, the rates and utility charges that are outstanding and expected to come into council, payables, obviously funds that we need to pay out, and provisions, and typically, I guess, most people wouldn't have a good look at that report, but if you do, it gives some really valuable insights, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Allen? And I'll put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Any petitions? Anyone at all? Councillor Allen? Could you please turn your microphone on?
Sorry. Mr Chair, I have a petition requesting council install traffic calming measures on Main Avenue, Wavel Heights.
Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thanks, I have a petition I'm putting in for councillor Cook, requesting upgrading of junction Litton and Colesley Road roundabouts, and another one requesting council provide a kitty cat city hopper stop at Mowbray Park.
Councillor Cunningham? Please turn your microphone on.
Sorry, I have a petition requesting traffic calming around the Lotus School area.
Any others? Councillor Landis, may I have a petition to receive them?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Strunk, that the petitions, excuse me, as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business, are there any statements required as a result of the office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? Are there any matters, are there any matters of ordinary general business? Councillor... councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise to speak tonight about 12 months of achievement of the Shrinna council administration in Calumvale Ward. Mr Chair, the last 12 months have been a difficult 12 months for people in the community and also a difficult 12 months for business in our city. But I would like to take this opportunity to convey a very special thank you to the council officers who have been working consistently to deliver for the residents of Calumvale Ward and also across the city. Mr Chair, there are many things across all of our wards that I'm sure that we could all acknowledge, that the council officers have worked with us as local councillors to deliver for our individual communities. So tonight I would like to just touch on a few of the things that have been delivered and are underway as projects within the Calumvale Ward. So to start with, we have had a good resurfacing of roads programme that has taken place across the last 12 months. And just to mention a few streets, we had Creststone Place at Alchester, Falkland Street East at Polara, Vanderclose at Drew Vale, Gravilia Park Crescent at Calumvale, Gentian Close Drew Vale and Rose Court Calumvale. We have certainly shared things around as well, and even though it was difficult during Covid to put on the Brisbane Festival, the street serenades went out to Worrel Parklands in Lara Pinta, went to Polara District Park, were at Heathwood in one of our local streets, in Byrony Place in Parkinson, in Calumvale District Park, in Carrawatha Forest and also in Tamarisk Way in Drew Vale. We have also seen extensions of footpaths in Deluthon Road. We have seen a congestion busting project on Alchester Road where it meets Bow Desert Road with the extension of the right turn lane. And that certainly helps when traffic is trying to turn right, particularly in the peak traffic at school pickup time. We have seen the Greenway Cycle Park completed. We have seen the Christmas for Kids event continue again, as well as the wonderful Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas parties that many of my residents took the opportunity to come in for. And I know that councillor Howard and I have worked very, very hard on making sure that the pop-up library has been a success, and certainly the people of Polara are greatly appreciative of the pop-up library which now comes every fortnight. We have new bus stops for the 460 and 118 route on Wadeville Street at the end of Kent Street, and this is connecting both the avenues and Heathwood Rise to our public and active transport services. We have seen at the Parkinson Aquatic Centre extra competition blocks that have been installed to enhance the capacity for our young squad swimmers and making sure that they can achieve their full potential. We have also seen extra car parks, terraces and shade sales. So we've also got another car park extension that will be open later this week. We have seen the extension of the 803 school bus service into Polara. We have seen the installation of a barbecue interregency place park, and by the end of May, we will also have an outdoor gym there. We have three new dog off-leash areas going in, in Calumvale Ward. We have Mingshan Park Dolla going in in March in Calumvale. We have Partalotti Park in Alchester Dolla going in by May, and we also have a Dolla going in Macquarie Way at Drew Vale by June. We have the stage two of the Cole Bennett Park playground upgrade, which will be completed by the end of this month, which has play equipment, swings, shade sales and rubber soft fall, as well as extra play equipment, swings, shade and rubber soft fall going in at Macquarie Way Drew Vale by June, Pedencourt Calumvale in, by May, and Dunvegan Street Heathwood by May. We have also seen our Sams, our speed awareness monitors go in on Richie Road in Polara and Acacia Road at Carrawatha outside the Polara State School and the Islamic College of Brisbane respectively. I am very pleased to support the Safer Routes to School programme across our city, and in particular the Gowan Road upgrade that will be going in over the Easter school holidays in April. Heathwood Park will also see a new double barbecue going in very shortly, and the icing on the cake is the Worrel Parklands, which were new parklands, which were $5.7 million of investment in this local area, six hectares, 58 car parks, toilets, barbecues, picnic shelters, nature-based playgrounds, walking trails through our environmental corridor and a great place for our local community. So this is just part and parcel of what this Shrinna council administration is about. It is about delivering for our local communities in our local wards. And, Mr Deputy Chair, I say that this is about getting on with the job and delivering for our communities, and that is what we are about on this side of the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
My pleasure.
I rise to speak in regards to a number of community groups that took part in Clean Up Australia Day, and I just want to recognise these groups because they've been, ongoingly, they've been doing a lot of work in my ward in regards to keeping the ward neat and tidy. And so, about a week ago actually, because not all of them are able to take part on Australia Day itself, the day itself, so they, but they still contribute within about two or three weeks. So the first one was the Baha faith group, and Divinia brought her team into Thrust Street Park, which was, was named as one of those parks that are going to be upgraded in the next, I suppose, six months or so. And I tell you what, after having a look at what they've done at their park, it's, it's, it's ready for the upgrade. It's spick and span. DJ Sherrington last weekend was undertaking that work by the Harvest Community Church. And I'd just like to pay tribute to the, the fact that they, they brought, I think, I think the whole congregation was there actually, because it is a very large park, but, and it needed to, to have that sort of numbers, I suppose. But probably the most interesting part of the, of the clean-up was in the skateboard, the very deep skateboard in this park, which I think is the deepest skateboard in Brisbane. And I saw one of the guys, young lads down there, he's probably about 13, maybe 14, and I looked down and I said, how did, how did you get down there? And he says, oh, I jumped down. I said, how are you going to get out? He says, oh, I can get out. I tell you what, generally speaking, this skateboard was so deep that you need to throw someone a rope to get out, unless they've got a skateboard that they can come out on. So at the end of the day, when I was, you know, thanking you very much for all the work that they'd done, I said, how did you get out of the skateboard? He says, I ran out. It was just amazing. Absolutely amazing. Anyways, and then this coming weekend, the St John's Leos, which are part of the Forest Lake Lions Club, they'll be doing the, their adopted road in the, on Forest Lake Boulevard, which they do on a regular basis. Even through Covid, we were able to, I think they were able to do a little bit, you know, in small numbers, you know. But, so it's, it's really an area that really needs that ongoing care as well. So I'd just like to thank them in advance. Lastly, I'd like to speak about the International Women's Day. We had an event on Monday, 7am start, which is always good to get out of bed, you know, at 6am to get there at 7. But listen, we had a great turnout. It was just at Simply Bliss, which is a cafe, coffee house on the, on the lake. Denise got up very early to, to get the decorations up and everything, and one of my team as well, Nada Hernandez was there, helping her and, and a number of other people as well. We had a really good turnout. We had three good speakers, very great speakers actually. Hayley from Anala Community House, who, who's been with the, with that group for many a year now, and she really is so well thought of within the community, not just of Anala and Durack, but also in the Forest Lake area as well. We had Belinda from the, the manageress at the Heritage Community Bank. Again, a really hands-on manager for this community bank, and she's out, whether it's, there's a project going, whether they're funding it or not, she's always out there, it seems to be, she's always out there on the weekends, just helping out, being part of the community. So, and then we had Alana from the Ray White Real Estate as well. And again, Ray White, the local Ray White office franchise, again, they, they have always helped the community, whether it's a little bit of funding for an event or an event that they take on themselves, right? They're one of our, one of our great real estate groups in the area that have been around for a long time and have been really a part of the, of the community. So with those words, I'll conclude.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? councillor Mackay.
Sorry. Thank you, deputy chair. I just wanted to make sure you saw me there.
Oh, couldn't miss you, mate.
I rise to speak about some local achievements. Big news, we're approaching 12 months since the election of the Lord Mayor and myself, and it's been a big year. So I thought I'd take two minutes to share some of the achievements in our local area. The Ninja Warrior Park in Guyat Park is now up and running and is possibly one of the most popular parks in Brisbane. We've got three community gardens in Turinga, St Lucia and Chapel Hill with construction started, and we keep building them so locals can get together. A cricket net opened in Robertson Park in Indrapilly for the budding Ashes players to practise at, and we put rugby posts into Turinga Playground Park and Fig Tree Pocket for the local Wallabies. We upgraded the bench seating all over the ward, including Sir John Chandler Park. There's an avenue of shade built at Indrapilly State School with two more coming, one for Onside and one for Indrapilly State High School. The Berbong Street wall down on Mogal Road looks beautiful now with its new Chapel Hill sign, and we've put some more up in Turinga and Indrapilly with more coming. The toddler playground in St Lucia opened a great appreciation from the local kids. And St Lucia got a new public toilet in addition to the refurb toilet in Turinga. Also, we put soap in all of our public toilets. We've been running a fixer footpath blitz in Walter Taylor, and we've fixed and constructed a literal mile of footpaths, including Hillstone and Swan Roads in Turinga, Woodville-Jenkinsund, Disraelian-Lambert Road in Indrapilly, Macquarie and Midas Streets in St Lucia, with Central Avenue and the 176 metre Esplanade footpath coming this month. Mordour Street Chapel Hill and Chapel Hill Road, Gower Street Tuong and Sylvan Road coming soon, and a long-stretching Gunnan Street Fig Tree Pocket. It's been a busy year in the environment space in Walter Taylor. We gave away more than 200 native tree vouchers. In fact, we gave away 100 more native trees at our event last night. 900 street trees have been planted in our local area. We're delivering the first 45 of 100 nesting boxes for local wildlife. There was creek rehab, including Anzac Park in Tuong, and other work in creeks in the area to stop erosion and to promote a healthy ecosystem. The Tuong underpass renovation has started to make it an attractive alternative for pedestrians. The popular basketball fence was built in Perrin Park Tuong. The first tranche of funding was committed to Witten Barracks so it can be reactivated to be a history and art space using the old cell and admin blocks. Anti-skid treatment was installed in a pedestrian crossing, got put in at Swan Road near Gailey Road to further improve road safety. Excuse me. West Tuong Bowls got solar panels with a Lord Mayor's Community Fund contribution. St Lucia Bowls got the Lord Mayor's Covid recovery grant to install their air conditioning system powered by their solar panels, paid for by their Lord Mayor's Community Fund. I'm happy to announce road safety improvements with the speed limit reductions in Hearts Road Indrapilly, Sherwood Road Tuong, Swan Road Turinga, Russell Terrace in Indrapilly and Chapel Hill Road. Locally, we had great events presented by the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, including last night's wonderful International Women's Day movie screening, Clean Up Australia Day, the Mud Army anniversary, dog breakfasts and so on. Okay, my time's nearly up, but that's just a snippet of what we've had going on locally over the past year. So I'll wrap up by saying our Lord Mayor continues to offer residents of this city a fully costed plan so Brisbane can keep getting better. Congratulations to the Lord Mayor and this Shrinna council team on one year.
Well done. councillor Mackay, for future reference, you've got 10 minutes, mate. You don't need to squeeze that into three. Further speakers? councillor Murphy.
Thank you, deputy chair. I wish I had a ward like councillor Mackay's. Look at all the stuff going on there, wow. Chair, look, as other councillors have reflected, deputy chair, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the election of the Shrinna administration, and I want to reflect on some of the achievements that we've made together in my own ward in Chandler. This term started out like no other. Deputy chair, you would, you would remember, we were being sworn into council via Zoom call. We had ward offices that remained closed for several weeks due to the Covid threat, and then community event after community event was cancelled, which added a very interesting way, I think, to start this term. Important to remember how far we've come. We're here in person. So as we put the difficulties of last year behind us, deputy chair, Chandler Ward is progressing many projects that will not only make our community better. We are building the roads, the parks, the public infrastructure that I feel will enhance our suburbs for generations to come. Just going on a little tour through the ward in Mansfield and its surrounds, I'm happy to say that council is undertaking three key projects that were part of my election commitments in 2020. We've already completed a major upgrade of Jeff Tokely Park in Mount Grabatt East. Stage one of the Aminea Street Village Precinct project will commence in mid-2021, and the Newman Wecker Road upgrade also commencing later this year. Council has released the design for the Newman Wecker Road upgrade early this year after the federal government committed $12 million to overhaul the intersection. Now, this upgrade will not only ensure the intersection remains viable with the traffic volumes expected to come through into the future, but also this widens the existing road and improves the safety of those two very busy RTO roads as they come together. This is funding that I know was secured by the former councillor Shrinna and councillor Adams, working together with the local member there, Ross Vasta, at the end of a multi-decade lobbying effort to improve safety at the intersection. I'm very pleased to be the councillor that will be there when we deliver that very important upgrade. Once completed, of course, the upgrade of Aminea Street will tie in with this road upgrade. Stage one of the VPP will commence this year, will include a concept design and internal investigations, which will end in feedback from the community in November this year. Stage two commences the following year in January, the planning phase, including design development, procurement, documentation and full costings, and then final design completed by July next year. So very much looking forward to progressing with that. And as I said, the Jeff Tokely Park upgrade was recently completed. We have a native animal theme for that park and refreshed landscaping and fencing. It looks really amazing, and we've had local kids just lining up to play on this park. Deputy chair, it's been really good because this is a park that hadn't seen an upgrade since the Sawley administration, so quite a long time for that one to come to pass. Further north-east, council is tackling traffic congestion, improving safety in a number of intersections and roads in and around Belmont-Wakely and Ransom, including the intersection of Rickett and Chelsea Road in Ransom, and the recently completed upgrade of London and Stanbury Roads in Belmont. The London and Stanbury Road intersection upgrade has just been completed with a roundabout replacing existing stop signs and delivering safety by providing a low-speed environment through the intersection and enhanced visibility for oncoming traffic. This was jointly funded through council and the federal government's Black Spot Programme, a very important programme, another collaboration with Ross Vasta, the member for Bonner. Another project jointly funded by the federal government and council is the Chelsea and Rickett Road upgrade, which will deliver better access through Wakely and Ransom, as well as providing greater accessibility to pedestrians and cyclists, because the other project that will deliver in concert with this one is the Wakely Bike Way. Work is set to commence this month, deputy chair, and we will see the installation of traffic signals, signalised crossing facilities and right turn lanes on the four approaches, as well as a two-and-a-half metre shared path extending 1.3 kilometres from the intersection all the way to the intersection of Rickett and Green Camp Roads to Chelsea and Rickett Road. As an additional bonus for Wakely residents, very pleased to announce the return of the Wakely Carols this year, God willing, and hoping that there'll be a successful vaccine rollout across the city, but fingers crossed that we will be back in with the Wakely Carols, and planning is already underway. In Carrondale, we've been focusing on improving parks with the completion of the Catigan Street Disc Golf Park, a great 18 basket course, has been a real hit with local residents, they love that one. Big upgrades are also coming to Bridge North Street Park as council finalises the design based off submissions from local residents. I'm hearing, I can't confirm, there may be a flying fox, I don't know, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see. The Wind Stanley Street Bridge has also received a facelift from its old faded cream colour to a modern deep forest colour scheme, and plans are currently underway to paint a mural wall on the concrete abutment below the bridge. We've just got to get it cleaned, so that's happening as well. Some of the big projects that are happening in Chandler Ward, deputy chair. The Carrondale Library in Westfield, sorry, the Carrondale Library in Westfield is getting a $1 million upgrade and refurbishment, though I'm very happy with that one. that one, a new colour scheme. We're also acquiring the adjacent gym site, adding more event space as well as studying space for the half a million visitors to Carindale Library each and every year, Deputy Chair. So I'm very excited to continue the work that I have been doing in Chandler Ward, and of course, a very important work in the public and active transport portfolio. So I thank the chamber, or at least most of the chamber, for your continued support as we deliver Team Shrinna's commitments for Chandler and for Brisbane.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Any further speakers? No, can I, can I remind councillors, please to sign the attendance book, and for those who have committed to come to the chamber meeting in two weeks' time, can I remind them that they need to re-sign in the correct column?
No, I'll sign next week.
Oh, no, well, everybody's missed next week and gone for the week after. But with that, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.